Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, June 21st. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the reorganization meeting, but I would like to start with the pledge of allegiance first. Could all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, according to the policy of the Norwood School Committee, under the amended section 1101 and section 1102 of the Norwood School Committee policies and bylaws, the superintendent is charged with the responsibility of convening the school committee for the purpose of electing a chair. Therefore, this meeting will now come to order. Nominations are now in order for the chair of the Norwood School Committee. Can I have a motion?
I would make a motion that Amory Mazzola remains our chair for one more year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, there has been a movement to nominate Amory Mazzola as chair. Is there a second nomination? Okay, hearing none. I will, I need to, hearing no other nominations, will someone move that the nominations be closed?
Is that moved?
A second?
Second.
Second, okay. By Kate. And then we need to take a vote on that to close the nominations. And because we have someone hybrid, we need to do it by roll. Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Sebby Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbon? Dr. Gibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Hiltz?
Yes.
And Ms. Mazzola?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's been moved to second, the nominations are closed, is voted five to zero. And now we will move on. So, we need to vote in the chair. So, all those in favor of Amory Mazzola as retaining the position of chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, you need to do it.
Oh, I gotta do it. I gotta do the roll again. Dr. Gibbon?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Ms. Sebby Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Hiltz?
Aye.
Ms. Mazzola?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I guess I have to stop running the show and hand it over to you to elect a vice chair.
Great, thank you. So, the second item on our agenda is to elect a vice chair. Oh, I don't think I did the nomination for much. Is there a motion to nominate somebody for a vice chair?
I'll make a motion for Dr. Joan Giblin to be our vice chair.
Is there a second for Dr. Joan Giblin? Okay. Is there any other nominations for vice chair this evening? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the nominations?
Subvote.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Kate. So, I'll have to go to close the nominations at a roll call vote. Could start with Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate? Yes. David? I'm a yes as well. And so, on the matter of vice chair, voting for Dr. Joan Giblin, I'll start with Joan. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, Dr. Joan Giblin is now the vice chair. And then, thirdly, we need to elect a secretary for the year. Do you have any nominations for a secretary of the school committee?
I make a motion that Dr. Dr. Thompson retains the position of secretary for the seventh year in a row.
Second.
Second by David. Do I need to close this one?
I think it kind of devolves to none.
I know, I think that's it. I think we can skip right to the, all those in favor part. Joan?
Aye.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So, welcome back to being our secretary.
Thank you. And I would like to ask that we appoint Ms. Donna Dolliner as our clerk to keep the minutes and other essential functions.
So, yes. Do we have to vote on that?
No.
No, he just appoints her. It just needs to go in the minutes.
I'm like, it's been an entire year, so I forgot how that goes. Okay. So, I have to tell you guys, I've been trying to find and open the agenda for about 10 minutes now, and I just finally found it. Sorry. Sometimes Google does a thing where it swaps everything the other way, and you just can't figure out what you're doing. Okay, here we go. And I can put that back up. Okay, so, at this time, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes in our packet, one from our June 7 business meeting, as well as a set from the June 7 executive session. Is there any questions tonight on the minutes?
Question to a group?
Moved by Teresa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Roll call vote, Joan?
Aye.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero. Apologies, Joan, you're gonna be first every time because you're on my far left, so that's just how that's gonna go. So, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have a letter from Senator Rush, which I will read into the record. Honorable members of the Norwood School Committee and Norwood Teachers Association, I appreciate you taking the time to share your budgetary priorities and your support of the Thrive Act with me. There have been a movement on several matters, there have been movement on several matters you wrote on since posted date, and I would like to take a moment to provide you with an update. It is my pleasure to inform you that in our recent budget, the Massachusetts State Senate has committed to fully funding the promises made in the Student Opportunity Act. Our budget invests $6.59 billion in Chapter 70 funding, an increase in $604 million over the previous year, as well as doubling minimum Chapter 78 from $30 to $60 per pupil. The bill also makes the largest proposed investment in Massachusetts history into early education and care with a historic $1.5 billion appropriate, billion dollars appropriate. HD 3162 is now House Bill 495, and SD 2067 is now Senate Bill 246, both titled an act empowering students and schools to thrive. H 495 and S 246 were referred to the Joint Committee on Education in February and are now awaiting their public hearings before the Joint Committee to be scheduled. I look forward to monitoring this bill, along with other legislation you brought to my attention in your April letter, closely as they advance through the committee process. I greatly appreciate you speaking to their importance to the Norwood's public schools, the Norwood's students, and educators. Thank you again for taking time to share your thoughts with me regarding H 495 and S 246. Please do not hesitate to contact my office with any questions or thoughts you have in the future.
Wonderful. Any questions on the correspondence this evening? Great. Okay, so moving on to our next item on the agenda is the warrant report. So, this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $1,930,945.87, $3,021,751, $111,059.26, $96,896.37, $1,704.88, $30,286.62, $9,207.77, $1,553.95, $11,961.46, $4,065, and $134,136.43, for a total of $5,353,568.61. Are there any questions on the warrant report? Great. Moving right along. Next on our agenda is public comment. So, a reminder to the community that public comment can be accessed in two ways. During our hybrid meetings, you can pre-register by calling the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting. You can also arrive at the meeting to register at that time. You can also receive a link to our hybrid meeting by calling the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting. We do have several pre-registrations this evening, as well as a couple of other signatories on the list tonight. So, a reminder to everybody who is here, as per our policy, you have three minutes to speak to the committee. The committee does not engage back as part of the public comment policy. That is not what this period is for. So, just to keep you all aware of that, and I would just call everybody as they are pre-registered here. So, first on our list is Mr. Patrick Mulvihill. Oh, and I'm sorry, at 7:12, I will declare public comment open.
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations on your reelection. From the record, my name's Pat Mulvihill, Lechwan resident of the town of Norwood, now a full-time resident of the town of Falmouth, and a part-time resident here. Live here three or four days a week. My business is still here. Proud graduate in 1984, class of Norwood High. I don't know, Mr. Usic, did I graduate with a blank diploma, or was it written in there? But, class of '78, gave the Oldham School. I call it the Oldham. I remember as a kid, I remember my teachers, I remember the impact they had on me growing up in this town. I could name my kindergarten teachers, two of them. I knew my principal, and I knew the administrators. They were very friendly with my father and my uncle, Dr. Copley. I had a presence about him. When you were a kid, you saw this set of white hair coming through the building, you knew the boss was in there. The faculty loved him, cafeteria workers, the custodians, the parents, everybody respected the guy. I knew Doctor, I don't think he was a doctor, but Umberto Napoleoni, the assistant superintendent, Jimmy Donovan. I knew who the players were. We all did as kids, because they all knew our parents. So, it was kind of a tight-knit town back in the day. As I grew older, I realized what the fella did for our town in his stewardship of our system, and how he shepherded us through some of the most trying times that we had. I think Mr. Pachkowski said it best, what we went through in the '70s and '80s. It was tough in the early '80s, excuse me. It was tough. A lot of things were happening, and to have a steady hand at the helm was a blessing, which brings me to the fact that I don't understand why I'm here. I don't understand why these folks are here. I understand that what I've read about dialogue and having the kids have an interaction with the system about maybe them having say in the naming of the building, but, you know, maybe it was the way I grew up, but I take it as a personal affront to the good name of Dr. Copley and what he did for our country as a naval vet, never mind the time and the effort that he put into our system. To take away the name of a building, which, again, that's no small feat, that Mr. Joseph, two weeks ago, said it was clearly delineated that it was his building, his name. There wasn't a preamble below it saying, you know, "Oh, if we renovate, I'm sorry, Dr. Copley, your name can get changed," or "If we build a new school system, a new building, it might get changed." That's not how it goes. And I'm hoping that you're hearing the community, and I know your policy. I know you want to hear more people, and you want to hear all different points of view, but I just can't get my hands around how this started, and where it started, and why we're here, and why the Copleys, through Dr. Copley's niece, have to defend his good name. I really don't. I'm dumbfounded, and I'm hoping somebody can stop this, whether it's Dr. Thompson or somebody can put a halt to this, because this is just something that, I don't even live here full-time anymore, and the phone calls that I got would shock you, asking me why, and I'm like, I didn't even know what was happening. But obviously, I think you can tell I'm not shy, and I like to speak. I have the utmost respect for what you do as members of this board. I knew former members of this board, it's one of the most hardest-working boards in our town, and you're all volunteers. It's almost like a second job, and I know the time you put in. I know you have about 500 other things on your plate that you could be talking about than rather than taking the name away from not only a veteran of our country's armed services, but our former superintendent. I know there are countless other items.
Mr. Leto, sorry.
I'm gonna end in 10 seconds. So, I'll leave you with this. I think you're hearing the town, I think you're hearing the community through phone calls and whatnot. I don't know how many letters or names are on the petition. I implore you, somebody stop this. I think you've heard enough. I know you've heard enough. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Next on our preregistration is Mr. Andrew Charletta, retired Balch principal. Did I say that right?
Good evening. I'd like to give you a little background before I begin. I charted Cleveland School back in the '60s, and then I became a principal at the Windsor School, and then to the Balch School for 25 years, now on the Dr. Copley. And I thank you for this opportunity tonight. I'd like to begin by briefly mentioning two past prominent benefactors of Norwood. It'll tie into my talk. The F.A. Cleveland School was named for a noted educator, economist and financial strategist who accomplished much for Norwood, Frederick Cleveland. The George F. Willett School, named for an icon, George Willett, who through uncanny vision greatly improved the community and business, municipal reforms, and planned a downtown format as it is today. So, I ask this, in time, if either the Cleveland or Willett Schools were to be replaced in time, would the new schools retain their names or not? I would hope that they would retain them with these two great people. These outstanding gentlemen were followed by Dr. Philip O. Copley, who served as superintendent of schools for 18 years, and was instrumental in the planning, construction, addition, and renovations of a number of our schools. More importantly, he was an astute educator, open-minded, approachable, and highly respected by all who knew him. He was a mentor to me, as well as to former administrators. Serious consideration should be given to retain the name of the new school as a Philip O. Copley Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charletta. Next on our preregistration is Ms. Toni Yasko.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. As you say, my name is Toni Yasko. I'm also a town meeting member in District 5, a parent of two grown children that went through Norwood Public Schools K through 12, and I also served on Norwood School Committee from 2001 to 2008. For over five years, from the March 23, 2018, initial statement of interest letter, to the National Building Authority, to the recent June 13 ribbon-cutting ceremony, the Copley Middle School groundbreaking ceremony, you and other community leaders did a most outstanding job of keeping the public aware of the development, design, and cost of the new Copley Middle School. The process was transparent, informative, accessible, even during the pandemic. I commend and thank you for that work. Throughout the whole process, the name Copley was embedded noticeably throughout the process. Never was it inferred, and there was opportunity, that there would be a name change. That is why I am so dismayed to be here tonight advocating that you keep the Copley name. I urge you to keep the Copley name and finish your middle school project with the integrity and transparency that you started with. The act of naming a school building is an important one. The name should impart a sense of dignity, respect, and trust, such that all citizens and students who enter the building feel they have arrived at a welcoming community space of learning. It has been barely one generation since the Norwood School Committee, of which I was a part at the time, renamed the Norwood Junior High Building after Dr. Copley, the former superintendent of schools for nearly two decades. Naming the school coincided with a shift away from the junior high model of learning to the development of an educational model geared for the middle school student. Because of this educational change, the school committee felt that the middle school naming was timely and chose Dr. Copley as the most appropriate name. Therefore, it is difficult to hear that the committee's naming of the middle school is being considered negated so soon. It has been fashionable of late to rename schools that might contain double meaning or possibly have a negative historical connotation. However, that is certainly not the case in this situation. You have heard previous eloquent remarks already about Dr. Copley from a variety of people, including Mark Joseph, with whom I served on the school committee, and others. Not once, as I say, during the entire middle school process of design and campaigning for the override for the new middle school was the possibility of renaming it under any discussion. Therefore, as a citizen and a town meeting member who did vote for the new middle school override, I am disappointed with the lack of previous openness and process in this regard. I understand there is energy and excitement about the future school and how it will serve hopefully for the next 50 years. I share that excitement, as I had to sadly vote for the portable classrooms for the middle school when I was on the school committee, and we said they would be temporary. Well, here we are 20 years later, and some things should go, like the portable classroom, but not the school's name. Yes, Dr. Copley is part of Norwood's educational past, but his life's work and qualities as a leader are still an inspiration for any educator and student now and in the future. Teach the students about Dr. Copley, his educational work during his tenure, and how he was a World War II Navy veteran. It will make the students feel proud to be in a school building as such, and help them understand our Latin public school motto, ad summa contensimus, we aspire to the highest. Thank you for your time and your consideration of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasko. Okay, next for preregistration is Ms. Patty Fanning.
I'm here this evening to ask you to retain the name of the Philip O. Copley Middle School. As many of you know, I'm a Norwood history buff. A few years ago, I began working with Jack Coleman at NCM on some brief Norwood history videos. Among these are biographies of those men for whom our schools were named, Thomas Balch, Cornelius Callahan, John Oldham, Frederick Cleveland, Charles Prescott, and George Willett. Each represents a piece of Norwood's history. Balch, an 18th century pastor, knew only a village called Tyot. Callahan and Oldham were born in South Detham, the sons of immigrants. They remained here to build the new town. Cleveland, Prescott, and Willett were already successful in their chosen careers when they arrived in Norwood, yet they gave their time to improve the community. Philip O. Copley's was a 20th century life. He was a native son. Born in Norwood in 1918, he grew up here during the Great Depression, graduated from Norwood High in 1936, and served in the Navy in World War II. He was part of what some now call the Greatest Generation. Having worked in all levels of education, he returned to his hometown as superintendent of schools. During his tenure, the school saw unprecedented growth, experienced unexpected crises, and faced the beginnings of consolidation. His was a life worthy of remembrance. To change the name of the Philip O. Copley Middle School simply because the building is being replaced seems baffling. Perhaps the school committee may wish to examine all school building names for their significance and continued relevance, but that would be a purposeful discussion for another day. At a time when across the country, individual and family names are being stripped from institutions because of intolerance, criminal behavior, and traitorous acts, it seems particularly inappropriate to remove the name of a good and honorable man who served his country and his community well. On a more personal note, while others have spoken eloquently about Dr. Copley as a leader, mentor, and friend, I can speak of him from the perspective of an employee. My first job after college was as his secretary. The consummate professional, he held himself and all around him to a very high standard, but he was also kind, even-tempered, self-deprecating, and he told great stories. He was a wonderful role model. I was delighted when the middle school was named in his honor. It was the right thing then, and it is the right thing now. I see no reason to rename this school. Thank you.
Next on our list is Mr. George Usic, retired principal of Norwood.
Madam Chair, members of the Norwood School Committee, Dr. Thompson. Number of speakers have appeared at this open forum, voicing opinions on the new Copley Middle School. We thank you for that opportunity and for engaging us in this dialogue. A petition with over 700 signatures was presented at the June 7 meeting. Residents have cast their vote on your website. You've received emails from many who support the cause. Letters to the editor have appeared in the Norwood Record. You have heard reasons why the school was named for Dr. Copley in 2004, and why we have been so passionate about keeping his memory and legacy alive. Do not leave this important decision to students. We ask you to reconsider your vote of May 3. You will have an opportunity to empower the students in the democratic process by having them suggest and vote on naming other spaces and rooms in that new building. Please listen to your constituency. Keep the name, Dr. Philip O. Copley Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Usic. Next on our list is Mr. Ernie Pachkowski.
Good evening again. Congratulations. Thank you for letting us speak again here tonight. I won't rehash what I said on the meeting two weeks ago, which is kind of a history of what Dr. Copley went through as educator. What I'd just like to take a moment tonight, and something that just came into my mind as I was thinking about this, was what good has come out of all of this, all these people, the petitions, everything. We're getting, people are talking about Dr. Copley again. You know, I think between social media and letters to the editor, and newspapers, and petitions, and I think that's a great thing. And I think the dialogue now, people are saying, who was Dr. Copley? And maybe we look at some, who were these other, as Patty had said, who were Cleveland and Willett? And people are starting to talk about these things. As time goes on, you know, these names and new people come into town, and it becomes their town, you know, they may not know who these people were. And I think it's so important that we teach the kids, you know, who these people were. And I, so, if something good has come out of all of this, I hope the name, obviously, I hope the name stays the same, but that we're talking about it again. And, you know, the name is not forgotten, it has, you know, surfaced. So, I just want to thank everybody for that, and hopefully we'll, you know, continue on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachkowski. And finally, we have Mr. Mark Joseph, former school committee member.
Hi, members. I didn't expect to be speaking here. My wife's gonna kill me. I promised I wouldn't.
Of course.
But, of course, why, congratulations on your retirement. I remember calling you and appointing you. I'm glad you, I'm glad you stayed. Dr. Thompson, Madam Chair, members of the board. I haven't had time to rehearse this, but you know what? Being on both sides of this, you know where I stand. My passion is with this name. My chairman sat behind it. We talked, discussed. We never took this topic lightly. I asked you to reflect on what I spoke to you about, and his legacy. I, my closing statement was, really think about what you're doing with renaming this. The last thing I'm gonna do is fractionate this town any more or any less than people perceive or think. We're a great town. We all work together. You got the easiest override, and I have sat through two, one field and the high school. I was the chairman when we were doing the high school for two years. It's, the arduous task is right in front of you. You have to do things you never think you had to do. You know, learn things you never knew you had to do. I want to focus on Copley Middle School because right now, my previous experience, I was a nurse manager of an adult dual diagnosis unit. As you know, we've cut psychiatric services, especially to children, kids. The shelter in place was just one. One event that, you know, bothers me that's going on at the Copley Middle School and addressing the issues that need to be addressed, and that's really, what you should look at is really counseling, getting the resources, planning ahead there. That's where we need to be as a community and as a committee moving forward. It's a, it's a most challenging grade, the middle school. And everyone will tell you that. When we sat on this side of the chair, most of our issues were at the middle school, but they were resolved by great teachers, counselors, parents, individuals. I think society's changed a little, and we, the focus has now become teachers and become counselors. I think society's changed a little, and we, the focus has now become teachers and become counselors. People are burnt out and leaving the profession. My colleagues right now, I think out of its two nurses, outstanding nurses, have left because it's just too hard and overcoming. The burden, you know, the burden's too much. I, I believe that I adequately showed the committee from two twenty-two special town meeting right through the Cokely Middle School signature that it has been a Cokely, and it's really been embroiled in everyone. It was a Cokely Middle School. There's not a guy to be taken, you know, lightly. He opened, he, if I thought arduously opening one high school was bad, and with all our things, but he opened, and he dealt with fire at a, at a middle school, starting double sessions. My dad was on the school committee, he was chairman. He got a phone call that said, Dick, what are we going to do? You know, he said, I don't know what we're going to do. And my father said, well, we're not going to have these little blanks walking around the streets. I want, he was an old police officer. I want to somehow, we got to designate something, which they did, is they started double sessions. Unfortunately, they ended before I got to enjoy them. And my father made sure that happened. He made sure that they tried to extend the school year of nineteen seventy-eight when we had the blizzard to make up for school time. I was a, I was a class officer, and it was my worst year. So this being said, that we don't take this lightly coming in front of you. We trust you, we trust you with our vote, we trust you with our children to think. Think of the impact, think of what's, you know, going forward in the town. You don't want that split. They're going to be coming to us as town meeting members, which I am one, and as voters and more, more, well, I guess, human beings, asking for things that are much needed for the school system. The last thing you need to be worried about is the school name. The, the school name's been dealt with. It was, it was dedicated to a great guy.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
That's about three minutes.
All right, well, listen, thank you.
A little over.
I'm sorry. Oh, you, because you gave me my letter to read.
I know.
And I was in prep, so my wife's going to shoot me on that. But again, thank you, guys. You have so heavy thinking to do, and you know, I thank you as a colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Okay, and so we do have one more letter. There was, Mr. Michael Thornton could not join us this evening. He did ask for his letter to be read. I think, I want to remind, I'm doing it as a courtesy, but as a reminder to the community that we do not, as a policy, read letters anymore. We did that during COVID, as a COVID, not courtesy, but adjustment, yeah, done adjustment because we couldn't be in person. But I am going to read his letter this evening because, you know, it, I believe is an honest misunderstanding. So the letter reads, Dear Ms. Mazzola, I was hoping to make these CMS renaming comments in person at tomorrow's school committee meeting, but am now unable to attend. I promise to be succinct. In the past few years, the Norwood School Committee has afforded me so many opportunities to help develop individual Norwood School events for Norwood One Fifty that showcase the individual cultures and traditions existing in each of Norwood's neighborhoods as we celebrated Norwood's one-fiftieth anniversary. Throughout last year, we continuously celebrated Norwood's rich history and bright future. One year ago this month, it seems like yesterday, Norwood School Principals, Teachers, and Administrators offered Norwood One Fifty their assistance in planning events, which would showcase the unique culture of each school and mirror the fabric and traditions of each, of each Norwood neighborhood. By all accounts, each school event was successful, enjoyable, and memorable for all who attended. In retrospect, each of these great Norwood Schools is a reflection of Norwood's, quote, "rich history and bright future." So too is the, is the man whose vision and commitment to developing new Norwood Schools and driving the process of educational enrichment throughout the Norwood School System, Dr. Philip O. Cokely. Dr. Cokely's contribution to Norwood's educational growth is unparalleled and generational. His body of work in developing and enhancing Norwood School, Norwood's Schools is legendary, and his comprehensive gifts to our educational community epitomize the phrase, "rich history and bright future," as related to Norwood. For these reasons, I respectfully request that Norwood's Cokely Middle School remain just that, the Cokely Middle School, as opposed to any other name. In my view and in the opinion of so many others in our community, Dr. Philip O. Cokely's name should be permanently attached to Norwood's, to Norwood's rebuilt middle school. It is simply the right thing to do based on merit. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Michael J. Thornton, Jr., Town Meeting Member District One and Chair of the Norwood One-Fiftieth Sports and Education Subcommittee. And with that, at seven thirty-six, unless there is anybody else here to speak? Wanted to double check. Thank you. At seven thirty-six, I will declare public comment closed. Absolutely. And I'll just pause for a moment because I know it'll be a little. Okay, so moving on to appearances, we're going to take things a little bit out of order. So going first, we are going to have Ms. Lindsay Har here to speak to us about the Cleveland Sensory Area Update. We don't want you to have to stay here through a lot of appearances.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. I think you all have the information that I provided. So I can't remember the last time that we gave you an update. I think it was prior to our dance-a-thon that this was just an idea that we had. Well, it turns out our dance-a-thon was very successful, and we can fund the project immediately and get it done this year, which we weren't expecting, so we're very grateful for that. You will see, we have the budget breakdown. We, we chipped in a little bit with PTO donations because we also had a very successful fundraiser this spring, too, for Parents' Night Out, which brings the total cost to this project to fifteen thousand, six hundred, eighteen, and twenty-three cents. And this includes a large donation from Consider It Done. I know he does a lot of the town buildings and grounds landscaping. He is a Cleveland alum, so he said basically, pay for the dumpster, I'll do all the rest. I'll make sure all the equipment that is not safe, not usable, is removed. And then when all said and done, he will add playground-grade mulch, because I know that's very important. There's specific things you need for the safety of the kids. And he's going to do all that because he knows working with buildings and grounds already. And then the company that we are using has done playgrounds at the Cleveland in the past, so they know our space. They are going to install it for us to take that liability away from us because we don't want to do, you know, community build, just, we want the things to be the right height and safe and usable. So that's an added cost you'll see in there, but it's, it's all, you know, within our budget. And then a local company, a DIY dad, is going to make a sign for us for, by the flagpole at the Cleveland, because a lot of our deliveries go to the Willett, or they think we're the Willett. It's been very confusing, and I know this has been kind of a project for many, many years, and they've never had the funding for it, so it's like, here, we might as well wrap it up in this because it's there and we got this donation. And then the PTO also has a contingency of fifteen hundred dollars in our account if something were to arise. We don't anticipate anything. We've had all the companies already out last week looking at the space. They don't anticipate anything, but better safe than sorry. So if you look at the first page, there's two structures, I think this is the first page you guys have. There's two structures that we will keep in the space. Everything else will be removed. So it's like a round, I should have taken pictures, but it's like a round monkey bar-type thing, and then a vertical climbing structure. We spoke with our teachers, our principal, our staff. In that general area, the consensus was a balanced pathway would probably be the most beneficial for our students. Jim can use it to, you know, practice balancing. Kids who just need a sensory break can go outside and just, you know, walk this path and relax. There's a tunnel where the kids can just go in, lay, hang out. And then what we weren't expecting to afford was the saucer. It's like a swing, it's an individual swing. We do have a few students who will be in wheelchairs at the school next year. The positioning of it is important because it will be easily accessible, so they can be lifted from their chairs and put into the swing without having to worry about mulch and all that. And the same for the tunnel, too. It's really close to this pathway. So, yeah, that's the plan. And then they did a cute little 3D model. This is all the new equipment that would be going in there. Unfortunately, the space doesn't look like that. It would be back up to the classroom. But, yeah, and then here's the budget and everything that I provided. So if you guys have any questions or comments, we're looking to, so as of right now, the company says if we were to order tomorrow, they would have it by middle of September. So our goal would be to have it ordered and ready to go as soon as possible because this space is not usable, and if you've ever gone to the Cleveland, it's the first thing you see. So we just want it to be a happy, cheerful space and usable because we have people in our community that go there, and it's really sad. You see little kids that come to play and you get launched off the slide. The slide is like a foot and a half, if not more, off the ground. The benches are all rotten and splintered. The balance beam, there's exposed metal, so if you fall and you hit your head, you're gonna, you're gonna get hurt. It's, it's not safe. So we're hoping to get this done sooner than later. So with your approval, we would like to move forward.
I just have a couple of questions. First of all, congrats on the successful fundraiser. And I wanted to thank you two for sort of working with us as we figure out, you know, as we sort of onboard this new policy in terms of working together and involving the school committee. I think we seem really on track here. You guys are able to do it soon, and that's fantastic for the kids. The, and you did say buildings and grounds has been involved.
They, well, we're going to loop them in. He knows it's happening, he hasn't seen this, we haven't gone past getting your approval first because we were under the impression we couldn't do anything until we get your approval.
So I think when we approved to fundraise, I think what we've learned from the process so far is the way it will go from here on out, and then we're going to finalize this to have it in paper and hand to everybody this, this summer. But once you get the, the green light, the approval to fundraise, the next steps would be you guys do exactly what you did, which is research, you know, find the great deals that you found. And then the next step is a, a sign-off from facilities, buildings and grounds, because we actually, there is a liability issue where they have to be attached to installation and removals, or at least delegate that task, is my understanding.
I did reach out to buildings and grounds about the removal, and they told me to reach out to Consider It Done and to have them do it all.
Well, that's, that's great, if that, if that's.
They're one of the town contractors.
Right, so that was our contract, like, that's, I reached out to buildings and grounds and said, hey, we're doing this, how do I go about?
So it sounds like the next step is they just have to look at what you've chosen and a timeline, you know, coordination in terms of installation. And then with that sign-off, the next step for any capital project with a sign-off from facilities will be to, to be contracted with our finance department, so directly with Karen. So the contract, so then the donation is accepted. You, you donate it to, we sort of make it official, they accepted the donation, and then the contract is a restricted, is signed by finance, and it is a restricted donation that can only be used for the purpose which you all have slated it for. But it has to then go through our finance department again for liabilities, in case.
That's understandable, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess what would next steps be?
We should, we should have the donation, Buildings and Grounds is aware of the project. They have been aware of the project. We will send them, I, I thought they had already received that particular, the drawings were actually, but they had been involved, they are aware of the project, they are aware of the possible schedule late, late summer for this, so.
So I think we can, does anybody else have questions? Because I think we can probably, with a caveat of their approval, move to approve unless others have questions that they want to ask.
Oh, Joan, yes, sorry. Thank you for the question.
Hi, so awesome, great work. I'm thrilled to see that this is going to be happening. I, I have a question that's not necessarily related to the PTO donation, but it is related to this topic. So if we want to move on the PTO donation, I just don't want to get it, I just don't want my question to be lost afterwards.
Okay. So, not a question, but I just, I'm, I'm looking at Karen, so I just want to make sure everything that we're saying is accurate with our business office. So the donation, so basically what Kate is saying is the donation is made to us. We take it, it actually needs to be, the money needs to be transferred to the school, and the school has to pay for the structure.
Correct.
So I just want to correct Karen, so it would be, yes.
I'm a little confused on it, that process being the donation, so that, so the donation would come to school committee to be approved?
Correct.
And then, I, my understanding was, is it supposed to be the business department and the facilities working to do all this? Or how is that working? Because I thought it was supposed to be that way, but I just want to make sure that that's how it's going.
What do you mean, working to do all what?
Well, I thought once it comes forward to the, to the school as a donation.
Yeah.
And at that point, it would be Paul working with me on getting the bills paid and the requisitions and all that, because they have to go through the school department.
Right.
So is that how it's going to work? I just want to make sure that's how it's going to work.
Yeah, I mean, you would become, the contract with the vendor is signed by, by the district. So then you would negotiate, like, work through the steps of that.
Right, so Paul and I would work together on, because there would have to be requisitions entered. Because what would happen is this donation would go into a restricted donation fund for the Cle, is it Cleveland? Is that what it is? For the Cleveland's.
Right.
So then all requisitions and purchase orders and such would have to go through that particular donation account. So then it would be working, the finance department working with the facilities department. I just want to make sure that that's how that was going to work.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the legwork.
I assume I sent her all the contracts?
Yes.
All quotes, yes.
Right.
And she has to sign them, it's correct, yeah.
Right, and then I would work with Paul because Paul would be the one, more numbers, not that kind of stuff.
I think what you're trying to say is, Karen, what you're trying to clarify is that then the PTO should rely on facilities to, to work with you to, to follow through on the installation. So they're going to know you because you did all the upfront work, and.
I've already told them that, that the business office will be taking care of everything, that I'm just the front, getting all the information, and then the school will handle it. Obviously, if they have questions and stuff, I'm sure.
I can't imagine they'd be cutting you out entirely.
No, it's just all the requis, once it becomes a donation, all the requisitions, purchase orders, all that stuff has to come through the, the donation account, so. And also with Paul, because he would have to make sure that everything meets the regulations, and that is definitely him, not me. I do not want to go near that.
Yes.
So that's how, if, if we're all in agreement, then that's how I felt it did work.
Got a question. So with what you were just saying, Ms. Sheridan, this is not going to be ordered tomorrow. That whole process takes a little bit.
You have to get a requisition and purchase order before you can order anything.
Right, I just want to clarify, because I completely understand wanting to order as soon as possible, but just the timeline of that, and I know there's numerous works and lots of other things ahead. So what is an estimated timeline? Once Ms. Sheridan gets everything to you and you work with Paul, just an estimated?
So we'll have to get all, all the deposits into the revolving account. And then my, so you're going to be sending this stuff to Paul and I so that Paul would have it? So then I would have to work with Paul on getting the requisitions and the orders, and I would have to talk to him about the timeline and how much, how long it's going to take. But in order to get a requisition, a purchase order, I mean, you're, you're looking at, and then to order it, it's at least going to be a few weeks, because, especially at this time, because the first week in July is pretty much, a lot of people are, are not around the first week in July. So I'd say at least a few weeks to get the ball rolling. But as soon as all this stuff goes to Paul and we get the donation in, then I'll give Paul a call and make sure that, because he would be, his department would have to be the one to tell me, you know, what they're going to order, and then I would be working with them on getting it through the system.
Right.
And, and some of this includes donation of time of people, which is so appreciated. But how does that work? Like, we're accepting this donation, but at what point can people start to clear the area? Like, there's, there's, there's supplies that have to be taken down.
They have to, they have to, they have to take apart some of the things that are there.
But that, if I'm understanding, is people's donation of time, not necessarily?
It's, so we do have to purchase a dumpster, and I think this is where Mr. Ricardi would be. Probably, Paul would be better suited because if we're renting the dumpster, do we try to schedule everything all at once so the dumpster is there for the install as well?
Right.
Which is also a headache, too, because as we're pushing it out, it will be during the school year. So it's just a lot of moving parts that I think Buildings and Grounds would probably be better suited making those decisions. I know I've already spoke to my principal because there is such, you know, a lead time with this order, and she said the important stuff is just to. Um, and she said the important stuff is just to get it installed. So, I mean, at the end of the day, if there's, we'll figure it out, but, um.
I mean, maybe recommending that we have a meeting with Paul and myself, and if she wanted to do it, that might be something good. Because then we could all get together and sit down and hash it all out, so that you would have a better idea of what the timeline is.
I think that's a wonderful idea, al- also because there's a lot, a few things gonna be taken offline, like the renting of a dumpster. That's not capital, that doesn't necessarily have to go through the business office, but it does need to be coordinated through Paul, where it's gonna go, how.
Well, it does have to go through Karen, cause it's part of the donation.
Uh, the cost of.
And that's part of what I'm trying to clarify. And the dumpster can't be paid for without going through the process that Ms. Sheridan was right.
That's why it might be good to have a meeting with you and Paul and I.
It'll be helpful, because you, the Oldham is working on one, they're kinda right behind you. So based on that meeting, you'll know even more how to sort of whittle down this process. So appreciate your working with us in that, in that sense, and.
And not all donations are this crazy, it's, this is, capital is definitely a bigger.
Yeah, we gotta make sure we do it right, so that's.
I won't forget to.
And also checking with him on, on hi- his, his guys and, you know, their timeframes and stuff like that. Cause I know, you know, a lot of time in the summer, they have things already scheduled. So, all that stuff would be, have to hash, would have to be hashed out with, on Mr. Riccardi. So, I think that's probably the best bet, as for, you know, he's, she certainly can be part of the meeting, the three of us go sit down and go over all that.
I am available.
And you've been in talks with Mr. Riccardi too, so he's expecting.
He's, he's, yes, he, he knows about both projects. He's been talked to about both projects. Um, he, he does feel strongly that the, these vendors are the ones that should install the playground, because they're the experts in that, that he should be involved in overseeing that process, so.
And Paul's expertise is facilities, whereas mine is more in finance, so that would be a good team.
Right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna forget about Joan, so yes, Joan.
Yeah, it, I mean, it sounds like everybody has done everything the, the things that they need to do. We are kind of now in the lead, um, and I can't fix, I, I'm not smarter than Mr. Riccardi or Ms. Sheridan in either one of those areas. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation, um, and the process that was outlined.
Second.
David was louder, seconded by David. Um, okay, so I'll have to roll call, uh, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
I'm going to abstain. I, I agree with the project, I agree with the process we just talked about. I still have concerns that I previously shared about the process up to this point, so I support the project, but I'm gonna abstain from it.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so four, uh, four, zero against one, abstention.
No, no, Joan has heard the question.
Oh, yes, Joan.
I think.
Oh, you had an outside one, yes, you had a related but not audible one, yes.
Yeah, this has nothing, I mean, and thank you, um, Ms. Har, we don't, this is, this doesn't, if you wanna go, please, don't worry.
You can run now, we're running soon.
Do you, I just wanna say one thing, can you email me your contact?
Dr. Thompson, I would like to know, um, I'd like for the school committee to get a report on the plan. We need a plan at this point. We have a contractor's report stating that we have unsafe equipment on our property, so that needs to be, um, blocked off. We can't have kids playing on that until this project gets underway. Um, and it makes me even more deeply grateful for the role that the PTO has played in, in taking leadership in this and, and getting this taken care of. But, in the interim, we need to make sure that there's no kids on that, um, area that's gonna be replaced, because we now have a contractor report, that says that it's dangerous.
Okay, anything else on this? All right, so moving to the next item, uh, we have principals, uh, Olson and Barrera here for the elementary handbook.
Good evening, how are you all? We're here to present the elementary, um, student handbook. So I think we met in the subcommittee earlier, or a smaller, right, committee to talk about the changes. And so we're here to answer any questions, or let us know what you wanna hear about it.
Well, I'll just outline again that sort of the way this process has gone this year is that you guys have, um, sort of brought handbooks up to speed with all of the policy audit work that the school committee did over the last couple of years, which is no small task. So you guys have, um, incorporated into the, the handbook those, those, it reflects those, those new changes.
And there, it also aligns more closely with the middle school and the high school handbooks, because of that language change.
Yes, yes, we've got a, a better connection on those, for sure. Uh, we do.
I just wanted to say thank you. Um, that is not the most glorious work, but we appreciate the time and effort that you put in.
We're only two representatives of everybody who put the work in, so we'll, we'll let the others know.
Yes.
Thanks for the, um, I drew the short straws to be here tonight.
No, we are the winners.
Nice job, yep.
I'll slip your under later.
We just had, in that subcommittee, we just had a couple of minor things that were, um, easy edits. Um, does anybody else have anything, David or Teresa or Joan?
I think there were some comments on there going back and forth, but I don't know, does anybody have anything that was not addressed or answered, that they wanna?
I mean, I sent all my questions in last Thursday. I, I think the elementary principals did a great job in your capacity answering my questions. There are some questions I still have that are beyond the handbook, that really need the attention more of Dr. Thompson. Um, it won't prevent me from approving the handbook, but I do need those questions answered and answered.
Yes, Joan?
So I don't know if I missed this in the back and forth, but, um, it says that there's the discouragement of withholding of physical education or recess as a punishment. I believe our policy is that it's not allowed to remove recess as a punishment.
We talked about that, I think.
We did talk about that, and I thought that was edited, what page are you looking at?
I, again, I might, I'm on page thirty-nine.
Yeah, we, we talked, we talked about it in, um, response to the, um, uh, disciplinary, but it, it was also in a different section. It was also on page thirty-nine. And I think probably what Joan is just alluding to is that it actually says discourages instead of, like, does not allow, or.
Is it a living document, does she have a current?
It's from, it's from School Committee Policy A D F, it's in the wellness, wellness policy section. So that was why it was missed, it wasn't in the discipline section.
Oh, it appeared again, okay.
As a bulid.
Yeah.
So I, I think I would agree that if you want, we should can edit, we should, uh, to align with the other policy.
Yeah, I, that would be my recommendation.
Diane, did you, what were you thinking?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's, it's the wellness policy, not so much as the discipline, um, but.
So that, so this language is what's in our wellness policy, and the wellness policy we had first, and the wellness policy discouraged the removal of the recess policy.
Yeah.
And then that led Joan into the recess policy that we created a few years ago in the subcommittee.
Oh, we didn't go back and.
But this language here, I think, is just a copy face of the wellness policy.
It is, yes.
Yes, so if we change it here.
We gotta go back and change it.
We have to go, and, and this was part of the broader questions I'm asking Dr. Thompson to take a look at, cause there were a couple places where there's discrepancy with policy. So if we change it in the handbook, we need to go back and change it in the policy.
So, hey yo, policy subcommittee.
Uh, I mean, I would say that we change it in the handbook, and then we make that, uh, one of our pri- you know, priorities to get done quickly, cause I think that's an easy fix.
However, the wellness policy needs to go through the school health council, so.
That's where we can.
Well, hurry up.
Well, I'm not prepared of that, if you'd like me to tell Mr. Fickley, he's not going on on a break.
The wellness policy is not the discipline policy. It's, like, why can't it stay discouraging there? But if you wanna be, be what it is in the re- in the discipline, keep it.
Yeah, because it, it does say in the discipline document, it won't be taken away.
Right.
I mean.
It, cause it's, it conflicts. So, I don't really care which way we go, but as long as it's been raised to the attention that we need to address and make sure that we don't have conflicting things, um, I'm fine with that.
So are we suggesting, can we, can we change it without having the policy? We have to change the policy first, correct?
So, yeah, I'm suggesting that we change the wellness policy and leave the elementary handbook alone.
Yeah, okay, leave it as is for now, and then once we change the policy.
I believe it is, because we also have to wait to see what they're gonna say, what more guidance, because it's all in the forms of punishment, which absolutely can be removable, you know, so.
Any other questions or comments on the?
Sorry.
So. Um, this doesn't conflict with the wellness policy that Margot and Hugh, it's different, right, for them?
No, they have the same language.
It's the same language.
Same language.
I think we just didn't catch that word, because.
I didn't, they don't have recess.
They don't have recess.
Well, yeah.
They do, I think they do a little bit, and they probably will when fifth grade goes up.
Yeah, that's true. The high school definitely doesn't, uh.
Has its own recess.
So we need to change it through the wellness, through the health, school health council.
Yeah, we need to add that to our list of policies that we look at in the policies of committee to get updated.
Okay.
But it does, but we should leave this as is, because the policy is, is what it is.
So I would make a move to approve the elementary handbook.
As is.
As.
And stay tuned for a wellness policy update. Is that what we're, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, okay. Is there a second for that? I can make Teresa, uh, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that passes five to zero. Thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, yes, if I could just, um, request again that the questions they asked that are broader policy be looked at by the subcommittee and Dr. Taylor and Dr. Thompson. And, um, just a reminder, all three handbooks had changes made to them that were born out of the March M A C update. And we had previously said that all of those updates would be implemented in our policy manual by August, so that there was alignment between handbooks and policies for the start of the school year.
By August?
Yeah, for the August meeting. And then, also just a request, obviously this year, some laws changed mid-school year, and we did not come back and update our handbook, so if that should happen again, I would just say we need to take a look at our handbook right away, rather than we, for the next round of them.
I would concur on that, I think, yeah. Um, lessons learned and all that, really terrible puns, but, not puns, but, um, okay. So, moving on to our next item, um, we are not, we are, so we are tabling the, um, Oldham Playground update uh, until the July eighteen meeting. We did not have the materials for that, they're not ready for that. Um, so the next, uh, item is Ms. Orlinsky, uh, to speak to us about the AP Capstone field trip abroad for twenty twenty-five. Yes, oh, yeah, sorry, before you begin.
Um, I need to recuse myself, um, because my daughter qualifies for being able to go on this AP field trip. And whenever there is a fiscal decision involved that only involves a small number of students, if the school committee member, student, child is one of those students, you must recuse yourself. So I am supposed to recuse myself, sorry, Mrs. Orlinsky. And I also have to, uh, leave the room, so I will be out there. And then if somebody could just come get me when it's safe to come back in, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much. I'll leave my keys, so don't worry.
You know.
Teresa.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Go right ahead.
Hi.
Hello.
Oh, Jen.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I'm here at the request of this year's tenth grade AP Capstone students, who did mostly come on this year's trip to England, Ireland, and Wales. And they had a wonderful time, and they requested if I would be willing to put forth a request to do it again in two years, when they are seniors, and to invite the upcoming members of the AP Capstone trip, um, this year's freshmen and this year's eighth graders. So they would then be in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, if that makes sense. We're planning two years in advance, because the kids asked if they could get going on fundraising. In order to do that, they need approvals from you. So that is why I'm here so early in the planning season, um, because they would like to get going on car washes and collecting sneakers, which was a really successful fundraiser for us last time, and try to do a few more fundraisers this time around to reduce the cost overall for everyone, more than we did this past time. So, I asked them what they would like to do. Um, they took the time and went through the E F catalog, and they came up with the trip to Germany, Switzerland, and Italy. Um, part of that has to do with the fact that they do do some studying of the Holocaust in ninth grade, which they all found to be an extremely interesting topic. And it would have a trip to concentration camp areas in Germany. Um, they also, many of them simply had never been given the opportunity to go to Switzerland. They've all heard of Italy and Germany, and Switzerland was just kind of a, they've never been given that opportunity. So, that was the one that they, having sat down, knowing that they would be the seniors that year, they went through about a hundred and fifty different trip opportunities, and that was the one that they settled on. Um, what questions can I answer for you?
I had a quick question. So, um, I know where you're hoping that you can reach as low as eighth grade. Uh, how, um, likely is it that eighth graders now know they're gonna be in the AP Capstone program?
We have about, um, eighteen of them already registered for AP Capstone for ninth grade. It's a two-year program.
Yeah.
So if they sign, they're already signed up.
Okay, okay.
They're starting ninth grade next year with it.
I, okay, I was, I was thinking.
It's not next year's eighth grade, it's this year's current eighth.
I got it, I got it.
This year's eighth grade coming up to ninth grade, who will then be tenth grade in two years.
Got it.
So we already know who's registered. We, we will have no problem hitting thirty kids if they all wanted to go. And if we hit thirty kids, we do get a private trip, in terms of not having to double up with another school, which is in fact the goal. While going with Watertown improved the cost last time, I'll say, there, there were some drawbacks to it in that our kids are a very tight-knit group. They spend two years together, getting to know each other in the classroom. And when you suddenly throw a new group of kids into that, there, there were no problems. They just didn't know each other.
Right.
Yep. I, 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 I'm dating myself, but when I did my trip in high school, we did the same thing. We doubled up with, um, Plymouth South, and it was kind of a shocker. And it definitely threw a wrench.
It's a culture shock.
Yeah.
They all got along fine, they kinda made some friends, but in reality, they would have preferred to just be with each other.
Yep.
So how many of our students went this year, and then going up to third?
Twenty-nine, me and twenty-nine teenagers and four other adults.
And, and one too few for your private trip, that's, that's unfortunate.
Uh, yeah, it's okay. It, it still went really nicely, and the leader of the Watertown trip was actually my former student teacher from when I was at Arlington High.
Oh, wow, that's, that's great.
So we, we made it work, we knew each other well.
Uh, any other questions about the trip?
Yeah, I just wanna comment and say, uh, obviously, thank you for your work, and, you know, I appreciate your planning two years in advance. I always like to be the counterweight though, is, you know, I recognize this, but when we talk about equity and the amount of stuff that we've put in here, this is a very specific group of kids that gets the opportunity for a field trip like this. And, you know, it's something where, uh, you know, I, I struggle, cause I don't think there's a good answer. You wanna give that, the opportunity, obviously, to, to those kids, and, and you see they're self-motivated, they want those two years early, so they can plan and do that. But I always do just like to say that my internal struggle is always, um, not that I'm not gonna vote to approve it, but, um, you know, I just always think about, um, you know, the other side, and what are we doing for, um, you know, those non-AP kids, so. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, David.
I can see and appreciate that side of the argument. Um, there usually are three trips that go, two of them don't have that limitation.
Okay.
My argument for giving this to those kids is that they put these two years of ridiculously hard work into AP courses when other kids aren't even given the opportunity for AP that early in high school, because Capstone is such a very specific program. And just to give a shout out to the program, we've had nine kids get published already as authors prior to graduation. Those kids, I mean, the level of hard work that they put in, it's something I'm trying to celebrate and grow.
Yeah, no, and, and I hear that, and I don't want you to think that's an attack on that.
No, I know, I, I just, I needed to have my counterargument for it. I want these kids to know that they're working toward something.
I'm incredibly jealous, cause I was in my mid twenties before I got published on anything. So, they're, they're already better than me.
Some of us aren't published, so.
These kids are killing it, like, definitely, but, uh, any other, yes?
Well, you say that first, cause I was.
I was gonna say, any other questions? I just wanna make sure everybody has any other questions. Nope.
Move to approve.
Moved by David, seconded by Kate, and I'll go in order, Joan?
Yes.
Kate? Yes, David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. And we can bring.
Thank you so much, the kids will really appreciate the opportunity to start the fundraising process.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jen, take care.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Okay, so moving right along to our superintendent report and/or lead agenda, which we have both.
We do have both, okay.
But we're, oh, shit, okay. We're waiting for Teresa. We're waiting for Teresa to come back.
Just roll, just roll.
Oh.
All right, so just a quick update for those of you who did not know, at midday today, we started summer vacation. As kind of a tug-of-cheek joke, especially out to some of my high school friends, I am going to call a snow day tomorrow. I've gotten a lot of, a lot of jokes from, from my friends at the high school about not calling it snow day. So tomorrow's a snow day. I do want to remind parents and everyone out there about the summer learning packets that are out there that we're handing to your children. The idea here is to do a little bit of work every week, not a lot of work in August. The idea is to keep kids mentally engaged, using those skills and advancing those skills that they acquired this year. It is important, look at the, look at the weather report, schedule a few hours on the rainy days, whatever works for you, Tuesday at 3 o'clock. But just if you could, as a family, try to schedule that time, sort it out. They are kind of fun and interesting learning activities. I'm really impressed with the work that is done designing these. Students have choice as well, but the idea is that they're doing a little bit of work every single week. We are excited about our summer academies that will be starting this summer, Summer Matters and the multilingual, lingual summer academy. We have a grand total of 222 students signed up. That is an incredible number and has shown how those programs have grown over the, the next two years. For those of you who have not noticed, the next time you drive by the middle school, you will notice that the construction is in progress. Things are being taken down, dirt is being moved, and yes, there is a system to all of that. But it is something that you should, we're really excited about it, but keep that in mind when going to the Copley. And then the other good news that I want to share with the committee, and there will be a grant presentation probably in July. We did receive the good news that the coordinated family and community engagement grant, we did receive that again. So we'll be giving you more details on that at our next meeting. Late agenda, I would ask the committee if they would approve the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Strategy appointment. That is Dr. Taylor and her contract.
Any questions on that? I thought we had that on here separately, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you click on the thing that says.
No, we have it under new business. I thought the.
The late agenda was the MOU.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was like, I'm.
All right, so I'm sorry, we'll, we'll do that later. This is the, the MOU with, with Unit B. I'm gonna start vacation on Friday. MOU with Unit B for the salary structure for the Director of English Language and Learning.
Yes, we have that in our packet. Do we have any questions on that, on the MOU? Not. Not, do I have a motion to approve it?
Still moved.
Seconded by David. I'll start with Joan.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And IMES as well, so that passes five to zero. Dr. Thompson, is that document here tonight's week?
That document is right there.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
So four of us can sign that.
Yes.
We'll have to wrangle Dr. Giblin at some point.
And then just a reminder to, to the community, we are in the process of hiring positions for next year. We are looking for an Assistant Transportation Director, a pre-K school director, principal for the, for the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy. Assistant Director for out-of-district special education, behavior intervention specialist, special education. We have several openings there. We are looking for board-certified behavior analysts, BCBA's, financial analysts for the Business Department, extended day staff for next year. As well as paraprofessionals. So that is the superintendent's report. And I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of that.
Any questions for Dr. Thompson on his report this evening?
No, thanks.
Seeing none, we will move right along. Yeah.
The MOU that you have, that you're adding the Director of English Language, right?
Yes.
I don't think it's on, it's not on, it's not on the chart. It's not on the chart.
No, it's not, we haven't changed it, and we, we're agreeing to use that for the, yes.
So it'll be on the chart later?
Yeah. We're using that same director salary line for both district-wide directors.
So it'll be just slash EL?
Yes.
Okay.
Director of Fine Arts slash EL?
Yes.
Okay.
We are, we are entering negotiations with Unit B next year, so we're going to be printing a new contract, but that's, that's secret.
So it's with the Director of Fine Arts slash EL, I don't want to confront.
I thought it completely wasn't on there, I'm like, did I miss that?
No.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Nope, no worries. Okay, so actually, it's gonna be Ms. Sheridan and Ms. Stewart anyway in the next segment, so we're moving on to budget. The first item under budget is our Budget Subcommittee Update.
Yeah, so we'll keep it pretty concise, and then turn it over to Ms. Sheridan. So we met on June 13th, and we worked a little bit more on our Subcommittee Goals, which we'll talk about later on in the meeting with the broader School Committee Goals. Continued the planning work for the Budget Balancing Committee, which I believe Anne Marie is in the process of scheduling for next week, hopefully. And then that work will resume. We went over the Spring Athletic Report and the Student Opportunity Act Program Funding Report, which Ms. Sheridan will give us more details on in just a moment. Ms. Semino was in attendance at the Budget Subcommittee, talking to us about some analysis that is ongoing for special education and student services. I believe, Dr. Thompson, that either Ms. Semino or Ms. Davie are going to be coming to the School Committee in August. With some staffing requests that they are finalizing.
Possibly. It's a little too soon to, to, I mean, right now there is probably a need, but there might be students who move out over the next month or two, so, to be determined.
Okay.
Yes, if we're, if we're gonna make a decision right now, it would be yes, but we probably won't make that actual decision until the beginning of August.
Okay. It just says in our minutes that they're coming on August 10th, so I guess that is to be determined.
Yeah.
And then basically, the only other thing is we set up some meetings for the summer. So we are meeting again on July 18th, and then again on August 8th. And both of those meetings start at 10:00 in the morning. So if there's any questions on any of that, happy to answer, otherwise, we can turn it over to Ms. Sheridan.
Any questions for her? Nope, great, fabulous, moving on. Ms. Sheridan, and is your turn for the Athletic Waiver Report?
Okay. It's not an athletic waiver, but it's the athletic report, but.
Sorry, the athletic report, you're right, yes, yeah. It's not the waiver reports, they're reports.
So, so in your packet is athletic report. So what I thought I'd do is just go over some of my notes, and then if you guys have any questions on it, okay? So for the full year for the athletics, the participation was down 31 participants overall for the year. The athletic fees, down 1,300, which actually is pretty good, given the fact that the participants is down 31. So it appears that the athletic department did a good job trying to collect the fees this year. The gate receipts are down 3,674. The winter gate receipts nearly doubled the fall receipts. They were 18,769, and the fall receipts 9,522. So I don't know, maybe was it hockey that was, did pretty well this year? So maybe that's why you, between hockey and basketball, it was pretty good winter gate receipts. The waivers this year are down substantially over last year. But we still have to come up with a better solution for that, and unfortunately, it's just been too darn busy this year, so we aren't gonna get to that, but we haven't yet. So the waivers, last year 167, and this year it's 112. So it has gone down substantially with the waivers. With the high school, so the spring was up four athletes. The largest drop was baseball, which surprisingly went from 61 to 51 students with a decrease of 10. And the largest increase was the girls' outdoor track and field, which went from 27 to 40 with an increase of 13 participants. The winter saw the largest decrease in participation, it was down 41. And the largest drop was indoor boys' track, which was down 14. And surprisingly enough, the largest increase was the indoor girls' track, which is up nine. Participants went from 28 to 37. The fall, it was down 34, and that largest drop was football, which went from 82 to 59 students, so down 23. The middle school had pretty success this year with adding wrestling as the new sport with 13 participants. And the fall was up 27 athletes, and that was mostly due to the new girls' volleyball sport they added this year, which had 30 participants. So that was quite successful. The revolving funds that we have for athletics, we have the athletic fees, which is the game, the game receipts. So as of June 12th, which is when we did this report, the balance was 12,714. And then we also have another athletic user fees, which is where the fees go into for the athletes. And that, as of June 12th, had a balance of 101,406, which is good because the FY '24 budget offset is 100,000. So it's always nice to go into the year with your budget offset already covered. So that's where we are on the athletics. So that was a really quick overview, so if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly be here to ask, answer them with regard to the finance and the number of fees.
Any questions from Sheridan on the Athletic Report? All right, great. Okay, so we can move on to the SOA Program, I should say, spell it out for those playing the home game, Student Opportunity Act Program Funding Report.
Right. So the Student Opportunity Act Progress Report. So I just wanted to give a little bit about the Student Opportunity Act. So the changes in the Student Opportunity Act, there was two components. So that was the fiscal, which is changes in Chapter 70 funding. There was new investment in education, a revised formula, funding formula, which reflects equitable distribution of the state educational funds. And the second thing was a policy update, and that was focusing on closing the gaps for the student groups that are least well-served. And implementation of evidence-based practices. The SOA plans, which is part of what this report is, is the gap-closing plans that the district has decided upon. And they're supposed to highlight evidence-based program areas the district has identified as key levers for closing opportunity gaps experienced by student groups the district serves. All right? So the report provides the details for the Department of Education. The Student Opportunity Plans are targeting student groups with, student with disabilities, high-need students, low-income economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and form, former English learners. And as we've been talking about all year with our increases in Chapter 70, you can see why this change in the Student Opportunity Act, why, why we've gotten a lot more money in Chapter 70. So then we, this is the report that we have to give to the Department of Education on how we, the, the different programs that, not myself, but the educational side decide on what they're going to use for the Student Opportunity Funding. So they have four, which is research-based early literacy programs, culturally responsive learning environments, inclusive co-teaching for students with disability and EL. And the final one is social, emotional learning and mental health needs of students and families. So what I have to do is, I have to take those four areas, and I have to figure out what, what were the expenditures that we did for the year to go towards these four different plans, all right? So the Department of Ed, how do they use this data? So the statewide snapshot of district priorities is what is being implemented and how the fiscal resources are utilized. So that's what the Department of Education feels that this report is, that's why they want this report. It's a data source as we engage in planning and resource development, and it's also a useful reference, it is for officers working with individual districts. So those are some of the things that the Department of Education is indicating on what, why they want this report. The Department of Education also asks the district to report on the different sources and to implement the evidence-based practices, not just how you used your Chapter 70 aid, but also how you use the other funding that you received. So the other funding that we, that we, we received as a district, the local funds, the ESR funds, the federal grants, the state grants, and other sources. So what they, in this report, what they ask us to do is, we have to not only tell them how we used our local funds, but also give an idea on what ESR, the grants, went towards these different practices, the four different practices, okay? So once these plans were submitted, all right, the Student Opportunity Act, Department of Education teams review these plans. For this year, there is no formal feedback, all right? And they just review it, and basically, they were, what they were saying with this report is, these are some of the uses that are going to be used for this report. How they're going to do this in the future, I'm not sure yet, because we did not even get any feedback this year, all right? But that basically, they want to see how you spent your money, and not only with your local funds, with the other areas as well, okay?
And does he promise you feedback on that, and they didn't give it?
We didn't give it. And the other thing that is good to note is, the new three-year gap-closing plans will be due April 24. So that means that in April 24, we have to do some new plans on this, the different areas that we're going to be using our Student Opportunity Act, okay? So that's another quick one on the Student Opportunity Plan and this report. And as, if you look at the report, it gives you the cost, the student opportunity area that the costs were associated with. You can see exactly what paid for the different things. For example, Menasance Schuzilla was paid by ESR III and was on the research-based early literacy program, okay? So that's basically it in a nutshell. If you guys have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer them. But it's really just reporting to, to the Department of Education to show them that you did spend money on those areas, and how you spent the money, and what sources that the money came from.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Sheridan on the SOA report?
No questions, just two brief comments. So one, thank you, Ms. Sheridan, and Dr. Thompson, and Ms. Sheridan, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Wyeth. I know that there is a whole lot of work embedded in this spreadsheet. Like, these numbers represent so much work and dedication from so many people, and I want to acknowledge that. You know, lately, I keep trying to say this is our budget in action, and this is our budget in action. Don't think people really understand what our budget actually, actually does. But also, there are things on here that are so important. Some of this ties back to the last meeting and the presentation we had from Lisa, and I, and I said it there as well. But there are really crucial services and programming happening in our district that are funded by grants. And grants that are going away in September of '24. So everything that we have on this spreadsheet that is funded by ESR, we need to figure out. And part of why is the Budget Subcommittee, we're trying to long-term plan and make a plan with the Budget Balancing Committee, is because we know this money has an expiration. And I think it's safe to say, we also know that these are services that we want to find a way to continue to offer to our students. So I just think it's important to make those points.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the next item on the agenda. So we're moving on to old business, and under old business, the first thing we have is Dr. Wyeth to give us a, an update on the Highlander Student Engagement Survey.
Yes, good evening. So I put in your packet just an overview of some of the, the more salient data outcomes of the Highlander survey from beginning of year to end of year. And as you can see there, 14 out of the 26 SES questions increased district-wide from the middle of the year 2022 to the end of year 2023. So we saw some progress there in terms of the earlier surveys and the later surveys on 14 of the 26 questions. In particular, you know, what area that sort of showed the greatest increase was the students' responses to the statement, "I can make myself smarter." Showed a huge gain from, that's the end of year in '22 to the end of year in '23. It went from 3.6 to 4.0, which, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, it's a .4, but statistically, that's, that's a pretty. but statistically, that's, that's a pretty big jump. And so that's, that's encouraging. In other words, teachers, teachers are communicating, that kids have the ability to make themselves smarter. It's part of the academic mindset domain that we've been working on, having kids sort of develop a lot of confidence in their abilities and having strategies to get out of the learning pit, for instance. In particular, overall, I think the Highlander group sort of clearly demonstrated in their data that students with IEPs are showing large gains, you know, as we disaggregate the data. In particular, IEP, you know, kids on IEPs showed huge gains, again, in the academic mindset and in the awareness to, in those two domains. And that's especially true compared to kids who are not on IEPs. So again, if you break that out, some of the, the specific statements that student, where students showed improvement was, "I can do well on all my classwork, I can do well on my tests, I can make myself smarter", which was part of the bigger piece up above. And then, "When I try harder in this class, I get smarter." So that is very important when you think about the, the population that's, that's, that that data sort of targets, the kids on IEPs. So they, they're in particular developing more confidence in their abilities to overcome some of their disabilities, quite frankly, you know? And then on the awareness domain side, my, they showed improvements in particular around, "My teacher is glad I am their student, and my teacher makes me feel proud of who I am and where I'm from." So, you know, those, those are, I think, great, great areas for, of improvement. And then another subgroup that showed particular gains were the multilingual learners. And they too showed significant gains from "I can make myself smarter" and through some of the, some of the other academic mindset statements. So that's it in sort of a big overall view in terms of where we saw the greatest movement. And the last thing I pointed out in the, in the sheet that I gave you was that the administrative team discussed, you know, whether or not we want to continue with this survey. And pretty much unanimously, they felt they did want to continue with it. It's helpful data, we don't want to lose track of these data points. We want to keep tracking our progress against those twenty-six statements that, you know, cover the four domains of culturally responsive teaching practices, work that we've been doing. So that's part of our PD Plan and Budget for next year, which is sort of the next topic that, that I'll, I'll share with you. The high school in particular really had a really good experience with Highlander. They had a really good trainer, and so they want to continue to go deeper with their work in, with Highlander, which, again, I'll sort of mention in the PD Plan. But overall, I think the, the work with Highlander was well worthwhile. It's called attention to some really important qualities of, of student experience that we want to see to continue to improve, you know? If you look at those, I think I gave you, the other sheet that I gave you really shows the, and I had given this to the, to you earlier, the twenty-six statements, you know? The full academic mindset awareness, belonging, classroom and community, shifting the cognitive load, student moves, shifting cognitive load, teacher moves, and then critical consciousness. So we want to, just as I said, sort of keep, keep track of that progress and hopefully to see further growth, you know, next year. So any questions on that?
I just have one, so can you remind us, the students who took the survey were in what grade?
So these are students in grades, it's across the elementary, so it's in grades three, four, five, and then all the middle school, and then all of the high school. Or not, I, because it wasn't all the high school. I think it was certain classes of the high school, and so they want to try to expand that, include more kids next year. I mean, they had to, they had to sort of capture one section, you know, one, one sort of teaching period during the day in order to do that. So not every teacher, had every kid take the SES survey, that would have been too much. So they had to do sort of a subset of that. But they'll expand on that, I think they hope to expand on that next year. That's part of the, you know, the increase in the cost of the survey. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just, just one, and you may need to get back to me before June thirtieth.
Yeah.
The last time you presented the data, I had made the observation, and we were talking a little bit about like the teachers seem to rate student resilience lower than the students rate it themselves.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if with this last round of data, did that change? Because obviously, the students went up even more.
Right, yeah, so the teacher survey, I think, I'll, I'll have to follow up on that, but I, yeah, I'll have to check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So moving on to the next item for Dr. Wyeth is the PD Plan. So we all have our, the PD Plan in our packets.
Yeah, so I really just want to focus on the overview. I gave you sort of the bigger, sort of the, the bigger piece that the principals and the teachers take a look at, but the overview kind of summarizes that in a neat little package, I think. So I'll, I'll review that piece, the PD Plan overview. So as you look at that, there, there are basically eight components to our professional development plan for next year. And the first one, and I kind of do these in order of, of the academic year, right? So the first thing right out of the gate that we're going to spend some time doing is the SEL program training. That's the second step for pre-K and K. And then the SEL program training for grades one through five. That's the new program that Steve Olson had a committee work on, and we shared that with you earlier. And that's Character Strong. So those, and I also included sort of the costs of the trainings here and where those funds would be coming from. So right out of the gate, two SEL programs at the elementary level will, will get some training. The teachers, the staff will get that training. And then the, the next big one is the trauma training that will include follow-up with consulting from the, our consultant, who is Carolyn McKeerney. And all teachers will participate in that, and then the dates that that will happen are listed there. September eighteenth is when it starts. And then it should all be, at least the, the direct training, you know, for all staff will be finished by December fourteenth. But she will continue to provide some onsite consulting work with each school over the course of the year as, as the principals sort of need her and as counselors need her to really target certain kids, do a case study and really take the work that they did, you know, en masse, a little bit deeper with specific kids and, and teachers. So I think that hopefully will be an excellent series of kind of training sessions. And then the other piece is the IEP training for all special ed staff. Lori Semino's running that. They've changed their forms, they've changed their requirements. And so it's a major reset for, for the special ed department, and they're going to need a bunch of time to do that, and those dates are listed there. And that's for all special ed staff.
And Dr. Wyeth, when you say "they changed", you mean Desi?
Yes, right. Right, and they didn't give us a lot of time, from what I understand, from Lori was like, "Well, thanks for giving us all this lead time to, to do this." And another part of the student services piece is paraprofessional training. We're trying to really meet their needs a little bit more concretely and specifically. And so we're, we're contracting with Rebus, and they will get a series of modules over, you know, the dates listed here, October seventeenth, eighteenth, and January twenty-third. And Lori's covering that in her budget. IEP training, I think, is going to be done by staff here. Lori and Kate had gotten the training, and so they'll be leading that training. Excuse me. And then, we've been talking about this before, the mental health first aid training for a hundred teachers. And those dates are listed there, October thirtieth, November thirteenth, December fourth, and December eleventh. And that'll be led by two of our staff members. And that's, as you know, paid out of the town grant. So that, we'll be getting that, and that'll continue for the next probably four or five years, you know, to get all the teachers covered with that number of trainers that we have. And then Safety Care Crisis Prevention Training for all special ed staff. This is another initiative of Lori's, and it replaces, you know, our, our CPI training. This is hopefully going to be more helpful to our staff in responding to kids who are dysregulated and, and will, you know, help, help provide them with sort of the toolbox, or, oops, it looks like I misspelled education there, with a toolbox for, for coping with, with those kinds of behaviors. And that training too will be done by our NPS staff that have been, received the specific training this summer. They're getting that training. And lastly, as I mentioned, sort of the continuation of our work with Highlander. High school will go to, go, go, you know, carry their work on a little bit more deeply. And then we'll have the SES survey for everybody, you know, grades three through twelve. And, you know, the other part of our PD Plan is principals have time to work with their schools, right? And their whole, all of their staff, so they have some, that's what we call the principals' agendas. And then also, the department chairs have time to work with their departments, and the curriculum coordinators will have time to work with their grade-level, you know, teams and teachers to work on curriculum matters, you know, implementing the new science program in particular, implementing, you know, ELA work and math, you know? So that's it in a nutshell, happy to take some questions.
I can just follow up with a comment. So, you know, our new curriculum this year that we're trying to bring is actually a, a social, emotional learning curriculum. But if you look at all the other things, it really is focused on, you know, mental health, trauma, you know, dealing with crisis. So this is a major push. This year, it really is kind of a comprehensive piece to address some of the behavioral and pieces that, that we are seeing. I want to, I want to thank Dr. Wyeth for his work on this, his work with the PD Committee. One thing that came out of that was a concerted agreement on the need for the trauma-based training, which I think is a good step when you have your professionals saying, "We need this." So it's not like these things are not discussed, or people are not invested in it.
Right, yeah, no, I thank you for mentioning that. There's a very clear through line there on, on all these, these eight, eight initiatives, if you want to call them that, right? And that's to really help, help improve student behaviors, manage student behaviors and, and, yeah, just try to still deal with the effects of the COVID pandemic, really, is what we're dealing with.
And I feel like mental health was on the, issues were on the rise even before the pandemic, so it's compounded, right? Question for you about the mental health first aid training. I know we have some financial and time restrictions that might, you know, will drag, make that a longer process. But am I remembering correctly that there was like a virtual component of that training? And is there, if so, is that already accounted for in this timeline? Okay, so it's not like that virtual can enable us to do it more quickly or get to more people more quickly, because it's about the teacher time, right?
It is, and the, the virtual time is pre-work and post-work. So we've built into the schedule for each day, time for the staff who do come to do both.
I see. Because I know, just from my husband's work, that a lot of that, it's, it's helpful. It gives you a lot of content, things to look out for, signs to look out for for kids who are in crisis. So it, it's, it's sort of, like, it's too bad that people can't access that in a, in a more timely, quicker way.
Yeah, this is, this is the way the program's laid out, and it's, it's, it's very strict and restrictive in, in some ways, but for a purpose, I was, you know?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the PD Plan?
I'll make motion to approve with the request that if anything changes, the school committee is involved.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second on my key? Okay. Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And a yes as well, so that passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Dr. Wyeth, for all your hard work on that.
Thank you, thank you. Can I just interrupt for, for a quick second, Madam Chair? Looking at the agenda, this is Dr. Wyeth's last thing on the agenda. So, you know, it isn't the thirtieth of June yet, but I guess it's another, another checkbox of done, and I just want to publicly thank him. We did do that last week at a retirement party, but publicly thank him for his thirteen years of service, his incredible work, his dedicated work, his passion for doing what's best for the school system, the, the students in Norwood. And I also want to thank him personally for his good counsel throughout the years that we've worked together. And don't let it go to your head, but I will miss working with you, Dr. Wyeth.
Yes, likewise, yeah.
Do appreciate you on multiple levels, so, but that's the clock.
It's been a good ride, it's been a good ride.
And enjoy, and enjoy your, your retirement, but we still want you to come by with some smelly leftovers.
Are you leaving right now, or are you staying?
No, 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 I'm not leaving right now.
Okay, well, you're going to stay for the addendum, or should I say what I wrote about you now?
I'm at the service of the school committee here. I'm more than happy to hang around.
Say that with Dr. Wyeth, doesn't have to stay.
As long as it doesn't go to eleven o'clock, I'll be here.
Let me just quickly tell him what I wanted to say, and then if you choose to leave, I'm not talking to your empty chair. So, so Dr. Wyeth, you are the only person around this table who was here before me. And you were one of the first people that I met with when I decided that I was running for school committee for the first time in two thousand seventeen. And from the very first day, you have been nothing but welcoming and kind and compassionate, and I have learned so much from you. At times, you had to say, "Hold up, can't get people work," and I'd say, "Okay." And in the beginning, you'd be like, "Go talk to Jim Hayden," and I'd say, "Okay." And then Mr. Hayden would say, "Go ask Alec," and I'd go back to Alec. There was a little bit of a ping pong going on there for a little bit. But, but you've just, you just, you're so, you're so wonderful, and I thank you. And one of the very first times I met with you, I don't know if it's still in your office, but you have, you had a poster that said Maslow before Bloom. And we talked about that for a while and what that meant and developmental aspects of kids, and it was just such a refreshing conversation to have, you know, very early on in my experience on the school committee. And over the last six and a half years, you were part of the Policy Subcommittee initially, when I first joined it.
And then when Teresa came on board, I said, "Well, well, Teresa."
But we, but we used to meet in this room, you, me, and Patrick, and then you, me, and Duke Tanya, and hash things out. And, and you led the policy on the Homer policy, and you helped us with the therapy animal policy, which, Dr. Thompson, you were also very supportive, and at the time, not everybody liked the idea of a therapy animal policy. And I just want to say, that if you did not work on that in two thousand eighteen, Norwood would not have Mustang Sally. So that work started a long time ago. I was, I served with you on the SEL Task Force at one point. I served with you on the preschool Task Force at one point. You've always supported our equity work, you have always supported the school committee. You have always been willing to listen and answer questions, and I know I have many. So I just want to say thank you, and I really truly appreciate all those interactions that I've had with you over the years.
Thank you, yeah. Appreciate it, your leadership, all of you, yeah.
Okay, not to derail, but now if you need.
Any else have kind words for Alec? This is, this is his ability to slip out before the, before, you know, midnight.
I'll just say that you're, the people who work with and for you have always said really great things. I haven't worked with you that long, but the folks that work with you always have the utmost respect and admiration for you. That says a lot in itself.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
It's been good.
And I will just say, in case you run away before the end, I was just going to say thank you and good luck on your retirement.
Thank you.
It's going to be a short and sweet.
I'm looking forward to it.
I also don't want to say it to an empty chair, so.
My wife may not be, but I'm looking forward to it.
All right, so anybody else with kind words for Dr. Wyeth? Joan?
Alex, congratulations on your retirement. I'm so excited for you. I know, whatever, your wife will be fine, everything will be fine. Thank you for all of your hard work and all of your dedication over the years. I have really appreciated working with you for the past four years. I have really appreciated working with you for the past four, five years. Congratulations.
Yep, thank you, Joan.
All right, now that we have sufficiently.
Carry on.
Meet Dr. Wyatt nice and red. So the next item on the agenda, um, I will be as brief as humanly possible. It's me to give you guys an update on the Norfolk County Youth Substance Use and Mental Health Task Force. It's the longest name on the planet slash subcommittee. We met last Monday, not this past Monday, but last Monday, virtually. The materials are all in your packet, including the minutes. This past week, we just had somebody, um, come to speak about some of the resources that are available in Norfolk County. It was actually a fairly brief meeting, if I'm being honest, not very many people attended. There's probably only about six of us, so, um, it was very, uh, very short. But just, just so you guys have, you guys had the information, there were a lot more, um, handouts and materials than I think we actually discussed. But like I said, the minutes are actually in there as well, which is very useful and, um, you know, looking at some of the resources that are available in our communities for, uh, mental health services. And that's all I really want to say on that, so that we can be brief and, and move on, unless anybody has any questions.
That doesn't resume until September, right?
I have not gotten a, uh, an invite.
I saw something from Catherine that it's not again till September.
I think it is not, yeah, I think there was a lot of have a great summer, see you later type.
Oh yeah, it says it resumes September 18.
Yeah, and there was a que, and then, and then, of course, there was, um, is always, um, if anybody has any suggestions for speakers or things they want to hear about, um, you know, if you guys want to hear anything about mental health resources, certainly pass it on to Teresa or I to, to just pass on to them. And we'll see what, who they can get to come and speak. They usually have some really great speakers. Okay, all right, so moving on to the next agenda item. David and Kate will give us an update on the elementary subcommittee.
Okay, um, then we'll sort of lump it in there. Two things on the agenda too with the RFP working group. So one will spill over into the other. Minutes are in the, um, your packet. We met on June 15th, last Thursday. So just a couple of reminders. First, because we've been hearing some stuff from the public, but the elementary study committee is in response to the fifth grade moving, um, to the middle school in a couple of years. So sort of our whole purpose for this, and there are some other rails, parallel lines going on, but, so we know the fifth grade is moving. And where this committee and its work came out of, subcommittee came out of, was we know we're gonna have a move, what is that gonna look like? And there's a lot involved in that. So we've had principals, all of those things, but, um, you know, we, we got the warrant passed, a town meeting in the spring to bring in a consultant. And, and again, just to reiterate, that's because we have, like, we, we don't have the, we have a lot of wonderful resources, but we don't have the depth of resources that a consultancy would to come in and examine some of those questions. So although there's, you know, conversations about reconfiguration or moving or those things, the goal of this is to have this consultancy come and look and look at all of those questions, see and say, okay, what is the most efficient way? What is the best way as the fifth grade moves? And I'm making up a number, but like that initial step, let's say for five to seven years after the fifth grade's out, what is it gonna look like in our elementary schools? So that's just sort of a reframing and, and, you know, you hear this word used a lot, but it's true of how we efficiently and equitably use the space that the fifth graders will open up in our elementaries. So I know we've talked about this, I did share it out with you, um, to take a look at, but it is not, we don't want to bring it to the meeting until it's all done, but we, uh, reviewed the pillars doc, I cleaned that up a little bit, um, after some feedback from principals. But it was suggested at our meeting, part of our conversation was, you know, sort of next steps, what are some other people that looked there? And it was suggested that, um, you know, directors, um, special ed, EL, performing arts, um, in transportation and enrollment, take a look. Just for some of those questions, again, the whole purpose of the pillars document is, you know, when we get this consultancy, we can hand them, you know, what I'm calling a two pager, to be able to look at it and say, okay, here are the things we want you to look at, here are the things that we, you know, have questions on, work your magic. So our goal is to have that for you for July because, um, Dave and Karen were going to take a look and get it to the people that needed to take a look at it. There's a conversation that will be parallel to that, give me a minute. But, um, also around next steps and the, uh, RFP process. So it was shared with us and we should have shared that email with you, or it's at least a folder in your drive that Karen had shared, just about some example RFPs. So they, Karen and Dave, put out on their listservs, their fancy contacts, uh, to get some information on, on consulting groups that do this work. So that is, uh, there's still some information trickling in, but that was just for their, there for you to look at. And, you know, there were just some questions around with the RFP, you know, like, we have a lot at $60,000. Is the consultant gonna use that much? I know that there are laws and I would defer to Karen in terms of like, you know, over a certain amount when you get that work. It has to go out to bid, it doesn't have to go out to bid, you know, she is the expert on that. So sort of talking about that and conversation around that. So our suggestion, and this is where sort of that, that parallel line comes in, but, um, was to create what we would call an RFP working group. Um, and it's not to give anxiety, but it's, you know, over the summer, um, that the administrative team put together and work on the draft of an RFP with a goal that at our first business meeting in September, we would be able to have that and hopefully to approve that. Now, um, here is the overlap as I look down the way at you, Teresa. We had had a conversation and some really good questions were brought up with strategic planning, sort of about our recommendation and that, and looking at specifically number two, um, on that draft. But sort of this conversation around an RFP working group versus an elementary task force. You know, and, and that was, that's sort of the strategic planning piece that the elementary study committee sort of spills over on to. So, you know, we wanted to, if you guys had questions and, you know, sort of ask about that. You know, it, it's all connected, to use a Teresa term, um, and I think we're all rowing in the same direction there. I think coming out of, and, and sort of the second piece from the elementary study, is that just for, you know, we think our next steps, where part of our questions too, and we're sort of not unsure on, but, you know, just need a little bit more information, is the time it would take the consultant to finish the work. So it sort of was our conversation and recommendation, which we're bringing back to you guys, were to ask for an approval of an RFP working group that would be done on the administrative side, we wouldn't need to be there, but if people wanted to jump in, they could, to get that so we could have a draft in September. Now I know, sort of, that's the connection with, um, strategic planning and some of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, are you, you finish and then I'll.
I am good.
Okay, yeah, so, um, so in our last meeting, Karen was there and representing the conversation that was parallel that was happening in strategic planning. So I see it as the working group sort of springboarding into the task force that was being discussed in strategic planning, so it's the same people. But you had explained that looking at these other RFPs, that you really need a certain core group of people to help create that content and build out that RFP. And also in looking at those, we were seeing that timelines may, we might need to relook at the strat plan dates that were estimated based on what, like, other people's timelines were. And then, so we wanted to give you, um, some time to look at things more and come back and say, okay, I'm gonna need this much time, and I think this makes the most sense, given what we, how we want to build this out. But just to echo what you were saying, I think it's, it's one of these parallel lines where it's gonna springboard into the next thing, right? So this working group that we're, we're gonna ask you guys to vote on would then be a, would continue, I think, to work with a consultant in the, with the intention that the strategic plan, uh, mentions in 2.1, wherein, um, the programmatic and fiscal efficiencies are looked at, right? So as they're looking for, yes, what happens when the fifth grade moves up? But also how are we sort of, you know, ushering that pillars document, essentially? The, the people that will be stewarding, stewarding it and working with that consultant, I think, is kind of where it lands with. So it's like just an early RFP approval working group. Did I help clarify?
I think so. Questions for the, from the committee, for us?
Two sets of questions.
Yes.
Tell me which one you want first. So I have some questions on, on the timeline, but then I also have some questions, David, on the pillar document.
Yes.
Around transportation, because I had said, did you want it in advance of the meeting, or did you want during the meeting? You said during, but maybe change your mind.
Yes, let's go pillars, no.
Okay. So just bringing some things that have come up in other conversations and other meetings around transportation. So right now, um, we have, um, 13 buses and we have a tiered system, right? And currently, the cochle has to go first or last. But we know, we've already identified in the educational plan and through the processes of middle school, that when we add fifth grade, we're gonna have to increase buses. And I think the number in the educational plan was 16 buses. So first question is, is 16 buses actually what we need? Which is definitely gonna need like all Bishop's expertise.
Yep.
And then if yes, well, if no, how many do we need? But if yes, um, what does that then do to all the other tiers? Because now we have three plus more buses in play that we don't currently have. And this came up in some impact bargaining with the union around start times and, and strategic planning and the budget meetings. So like currently, it's a very convoluted tier system of, you know, we go out and we get St. Catherine's on one bus and they get dropped off. And then, um, the buses go out and get all of our elementary kids. And then some of the buses go from the elementaries to the Willet, and then the other ones go from the elementary to the high school. And then they all meet again to get our cochle, our cochle kids, right? So there's elementary, there's St. Catherine's, there's Willet, middle, high, there's a five-tier system. And one of the questions that keeps coming up is are we going to continue to need a five-tier system? Or if we have three plus more buses in play, does that allow for some movement of times?
Yep.
Do we have a transportation question on the pillars document?
There's just a question mark.
And we can definitely, when we send it along, ask.
So, so that's the type of analysis that's been discussed so far that we need to do both for the middle school, but then also as part of this, once we know what we need for the cochle, what does that then mean for the whole district?
Sweet.
That's my quick recap for you.
Great, next, you said two.
Well, that was the pillar stuff. The rest of it looks great and I appreciate your work and the principal's work. So I'm just trying to understand again, um, the work that you're asking us to vote on tonight and then how that's gonna lead into the vote that I believe we're taking on July 18th on the strategic plan. So if we approve a working group tonight, which I'm not against, but you're, I'm not against a working group, but if we approve that tonight, and I'm hearing you saying that that may then shift the rest of this timeline on 2.1, but we're voting in a month on 2.1. So when is the shifting happening and?
So I guess my answer to that, based on what has been done so far, is if we can put in language in the strategic plan on that around that maybe the start of a task force, um, is dependent on, you know, just it's, it's like when we know how long it's gonna take the consultant to complete the work, is that that, that's sort of when you begin to onboard that task force, if that makes sense. So there's really not an answer to that question yet, as I understand it. Just we would need to adjust language because, you know, our hope is in September, we have an RFP that we then vote that goes out. And that kicks off the work, or that would kick in, putting the task force together, then to sort of, as the consultancy is done and we get those results handed off to that group, if that makes sense.
Can I ask a question? Are you asking, how do we revise the strat plan language? And then what's the process for that, because a lot of people contributed to that conversation, right?
Yeah, I'm asking if there's a different proposal for what is on 2.1.
I think it's just a matter of dates. I think once, and so if there's a process for adjusting dates formally for the strat plan and letting the people know, then we should go through that process. But I think it's as simple as approving the RFP and then, based on what that working group finds in building it, and Karen would suggest a timeline that then makes sense for the, for the pieces that already exist into the strat plan.
Yeah, just to add, I would say in terms of the vote for July, I would focus on the what and not the independent, the individual activities and how. Because as we've seen this year, we don't know what next year's gonna throw at us.
Right, right.
And we need to be nimble. So I would focus on what the objectives are, the new strategy summaries, and take your vote based on that information.
So you would not recommend the timeline, the smart, so, so, cause something that we continue.
So we need to do the timeline?
Yeah.
Because it's to guide our work?
Yeah.
But in terms of that being a deciding factor in whether or not to approve or not approve?
Yeah.
I would not use that specific criteria.
Yeah.
As a reason to approve or not approve the, the plan in entirety.
Okay. So again, this is just me trying to reconcile many things, because in the packet under goals, I did go to the workshop to count it. This is my 15th time going through a goal workshop at MNC. Okay, like, I really don't like to speak unless I know what I'm talking about.
Has it changed?
Well, yeah, it has evolved.
Wow, okay.
Cause this all evolves. But I, I, I share my notes with everybody and like, um, setting goals is our responsibility as school committee. And that's the strategic plan, that's Dave's goals, that's our goals, that's the district's goals. And we're told to make them smart, and that includes the timeline. So I'm all for flexibility, I'm all for evolution, I'm all for being updated, and hey, we need to pivot things. I just don't want to take a vote tonight that is in any way gonna counter the vote we're gonna be asked to take in a month. That's one thing. But then I, I brought this up, the strategic planning, um, you know, Karen, you were in the group that, that worked on 2.1. I'm really worried about this timeline, and I, this is going slightly off topic, but just so you were understanding as we're kind of working group, what we're saying right now is that in a year from now, we have made a decision on how we are, if we are reorganizing our elementary schools. So if the first step gets delayed, it all gets delayed.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that with the approval of this, we say we're going to revise the timeline, based on what we learned through the RFP process.
Cause we had talked about, I haven't had time yet, but we took call up some of the other districts to see what their timelines were, to get an idea. Cause obviously this is new to us, we've never done any of this in this RFP.
Right.
So that was one of the reasons why we were not exactly sure about the timeline is because we have, we're gonna see if we can find out from others how long it actually took to do through the entire process.
Right, right.
So it has to be, I guess, at this point, a little flexible because it's so unknown.
Yeah.
Well, I think to Teresa's point too, it's a plan.
Right.
Like, it's a plan, like, that's what you plan to do.
No, I understand, but like, having been in the working group who spent time on this and respecting the feedback, and I know everybody is, but like, having heard it firsthand and respecting what the other admin said, and I think everybody said, wow, this is a really tight timeline. But it also involves work of the budget subcommittee at some point, and it involves work of the larger school committee. Like, there's a lot of dominoes of that, so I'm just trying to understand.
I think that we would, when's our next elementar, we, we'll.
We're determining, it'll be in August.
We, yeah, we'll know, wait, will we know a new timeline before we meet in July?
Well, that was, I thought, I was gonna call and see some of the districts and see what their timelines were.
Yeah.
Gonna be, cause we know, we certainly can't have this all ready for the July meeting.
Sure, yeah.
So we're trying to see if we get everything done by the end of the summer for the September meeting and then move on, because.
So I think since the main, the, the meaning of the strat plan isn't gonna change, we could vote on it in July, knowing that there's that asterisk with the timeline on, that we're going to go revisit the timeline for 2.1 after we have more information in August. I don't think we have to.
Would you feel better if we sent you something that was like, hey, based on what we read in 2.1, where we are today, this is what we suggest for July?
Well, yeah, I mean, what I'm trying to get at with my questions in advance is how does this impact the concept? So that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, totally.
And I, you know, and I think, you know, we can, we can call other districts, it's something with, we, going back to the original idea of having a consultant, not trying to do it ourselves. There is a level of complexity here with how things are currently done, that even if we call another district and tell them, well, we got this, and they're gonna say,
Right.
what the hell are you talking about?
Right.
So there, there is, there's a lot of unknown in this. Because it's the first time we're really trying to go down this road to be as efficient as possible and look at our space and look at all these things. And then the, I mean, you just illustrated perfectly when you started talking about the buses.
Well, I could've gone more, but I.
I know, but, I mean.
Trying to give you a.
Right, so normally in other districts, we have a three-tier bus system.
Yeah.
We really have a five-tier.
Yeah.
Masquerading as a three-tier. All right, so, um, that, that, and that's just one piece of, of all of the different things that just. So it's, so it, it's hard to really nail down a timeline when every step you are gonna be taking, you're gonna go, oh, ah, oh, I did, oh, ah. It, it's going to be. It, it's going to be that kind of journey. So, we can, you know, I think the, the goal for the end of where we wanna be is probably the most important thing. You know, the what we want to accomplish. And, and unfortunately, as we're navigating this, the how we're gonna do it is, is, is going to be shifting. Um, and, and I wish I could, I mean, we could wait till this time next year, then back engineer the, the plan. That would be much more, that would be much easier. But I don't think that that's getting us where we wanna go either.
I just, Emery, if I could recap, I, I think for the public too and for Mary Ellen, the paper who is here, I, to understand that the, we have an elementary subcommittee group that is responding to the, the, the middle's, I'm recapping, the middle school move. And we are looking at bringing in con- consultants to see how to best use the space in the elementary schools. It flows directly into our strategic planning goals around programmatic and, uh, financial efficiencies overall and how that figures into how we use all of our elementary schools.
Right.
So, these are two sort of, it's a workflow that's sort of merging from, growing from one group into another. And, um, it, just because we've been talking about a lot of different things. And what we're looking at to what you said is that some of these factors are going to change. So, a timeline may be somewhat fluid, but it, for the strategic plan, we have to identify a goal and rough dates, basically.
The three things, the working group, the strategic plan, and is all, and to me, I'm glad with the working group because it's also gonna help us with budget. Because all the criteria needed in order to do this RFP is gonna help us to look at what costs we're gonna need for this next budget that we're.
Right, right. Which is also leading to some of my questions, knowing intimately what's on the workload of the budget subcommittee.
Right.
I mean, we have tentative small to agenda that may flex. But again, this one decision, to me, thinking big picture of everything that lives in my brain, it just has a domino effect.
It connects to so many things.
And I'm just trying to understand what.
Yeah.
So, I think what we're looking for is a RFP, a working group for the RFP initially, that Karen would lead. Right? And you would set up the dates that you needed to work with everyone with that group. And then there'd probably be another inflection point, once the RFP is done, once consultancy is figured out and then another set of dates and maybe representatives from the school committee flow back in at some, in some respect. But that's another, this, we don't have to vote on that subject.
Right, if the working, the working group may decide that it, an RFP is not needed or is needed, I'm not exactly sure yet, because, um, with the commitment, if it's, if it's under a hundred thousand, it doesn't have to be, uh, an RFP. It can be three quotes or state contracts. So, the working group is gonna help us to make those decisions, whether we're gonna go with an RFP or we're gonna go with three quotes and get all the criteria needed for whomever to give us their recommendations.
So, if we don't, just to that, if you don't do an RFP and you're saying you get three quotes, how do you, how does, how do you review a person's qualifications or skills or what do you use?
I think it's similar to the RFP, it's just that you don't have to go out to bid on it.
I see, I see.
I mean, you would, I think the criteria would be similar to what you want for the.
So, it's kind of the same content, but.
It's similar, it's a little less formal.
It's a little less formal, and some people still go out to bid even though it's not, it's not required. But some people still would prefer to go out to the bid.
And that's where we would defer.
That's what the working group is gonna make decisions on.
Yeah, we would defer to your judgment as a professional doing it, so.
So, I was gonna say, so what we're look, what you're looking for tonight is a, a vote to create the working group to look at the RFP, correct?
We are calling RFP Working.
Which, perfectly fine. For that, is, uh, does anyone wanna make a motion to approve an RFP working group for the purposes of the middle school? I mean, the, am I just, move by Teresa, is there a second? Second, seconded by Kate, okay, Joan?
Hi.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate, yes, David?
Yes.
I M E S as well, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Could I just request, sorry?
Yeah.
Because this is a little bit different than the strategic planning conversation. Could Dr. Thompson, Dr. Taylor, Ms. Sheridan, draw straws, I don't care, one of you, just convey these changes to the admins who worked on it, so they're not completely caught off guard with the changes.
Sweet.
Thank you.
So, I know I'm going right down the agenda, but the middle school building update.
I think we should table it until July, because we just did it last.
I know there's just two things, there's one I wanna bring up, I'm sorry. So, we met, it was really quick. Teresa, what did we sign?
Two point what?
Oh, we're three point, we're three point nine million dollars under, which is great, right now.
Yes. What's getting put back on?
Every, every.
Well, we already added the alternate, remember we told you that last meeting? And the cost of the, um, concession stand did go down a little bit. It's now under seven hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, good.
Um, it is now six ninety-one.
Which is great, so good news all around.
If I can add there a mixed cement, can that be even lower? I mean, like, seriously.
But we are three point nine million under budget, which is good news, as Steve said.
That's great.
Um, and then obviously, you know, you were in attendance, uh, as well. We did have the official groundbreaking ceremony, which is excitement, which is exciting because it represents all of the work from everyone from when this process started, which is really fun. So, um, almost in that home stretch where the building actually gets built. Um, but the last thing, and I was just, wanted to bring up to you guys, but also just to ask you, Teresa too, is, you know, there was some concern around, as we now move into the construction phase, just the meeting of the working group, is that going on? Or the reason why I ask for, for those at home, there's the middle school building committee. But as this process starts, this is where we really need to rely on the people on the ground. The Paul Ricardis, the Margos, the, the people that are in the building. The example I will give is this, in the building that I work in that's new. Someone who didn't work in the high school suggested to not put a card swipe somewhere for, for staff. So, if you think about emergency management, all that stuff. Long story short, like, on our second and third floors, we can't shut doors because then staff can't get in because they don't have keys, because someone said, no, we're not doing that. So, the reason why I ask that is I think right now it's really important the working group is meeting because as the building goes to go up, there are inevitably gonna be questions about, oh, should this go here? Should that be here? And is that happening? And if it's not, is there something that we need to do to make that happen?
Well, for two years, the working group was on Tuesdays and it was very educational and programming focused and, and, um, Dr. Taylor, before Dr. Taylor, Dana Brown, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Frazek, and I would attend those. That dismantled in April, right? And then they started a new, I, I, I don't even know what it's called, it's more construction based, it's on Wednesdays.
Okay.
I don't think in my role I need to be there, but Dr. Thompson, Dr. Taylor, has anybody been going from the district or been notified about them?
Yes, so, so Paul Ricardi has been going, Margot has been going as needed.
Okay.
Um, those are still very early at this point. You know, once you get the, you get the concrete in the ground, the steel up, then there's a lot more. It's a lot more about coordinating the build and what needs to shift and these sort of things. You know, some, sometimes little, you know, and then it gets more intensive again at the end with the punch list of what's in and what's out and what about that?
Yeah.
So, um, we're kind of in the, the lull. I mean, I don't think the principal needs to be there to talk about where the pile of room is going to go for the summer. I mean, so it's gonna, it, it's gonna kind of flow. Those are going to move into the construction management trailer that is not put on site yet. So, but Paul Ricardi, Paul Ricardi. Yeah, it is, uh, it is definitely time for a vacation, so. Did you notice? Yeah. I hope he's listening. So, uh, Paul Ricardi, uh, Paul Ricardi is kind of our key person there because he does understand buildings and buildings.
Right.
And building, buildings and that sort of thing. And, you know, I have been told that if there is a big programmatic piece that I will be told about the meeting. That has not happened yet at this point in time, because again, we're preparing the area, you know, clearing the land.
Totally, I just, and, and it, it happens, like, you go through, we, we were a part of an audit where four years later, they come back and, you know, I get to talk with the nice people from the state and tell them what they did wrong. But it's like, you know, I just, I don't, I don't want a card swipe situation. I just, it's my nightmare, it's my nightmare at the place I work at, so, um, thank you.
And, and we already, we already actually had a lot of those conversations
Good.
around security and access and all those way before, before the final plans were put together.
Okay.
So.
And all those plans were approved by the school committee and executive session.
Right.
Safety plans, so.
Right.
I would assume if those need to change for any reason, they tell you and you bring it back to the school committee.
Right, right.
Great.
So, um, sometimes things will come up where, you know, it, it, blue is not an option, you have to go with aqua. So, I mean, I'm just, which, again, according to my wife, I am totally unqualified to make those decisions.
A million, yeah, a million dollar.
I will definitely.
A million dollar. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if there was nothing else, that was all, so thank you. Now, we don't have to do it again for a couple of months.
We meet again July tenth and August twenty-first. Both of those meetings are at five P M. in this building across the hall in two nineteen.
Yeah, they, a, after me saying that we can move over here, we finally had to move over here and they discovered that that's actually a much more.
I would, yeah.
Um, unfortunately, I will not be able to make the tenth meeting because that is the first day of the, of the conference, so.
Okay.
Um, I did let Mr. Slater know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we're gonna break up middle school stuff a little bit to, um, school health council update.
Yes, so I will be brief. So, we met as a school health council again on June eighth. And we are meeting in September, Thursday, September fourteenth at three thirty at the Norwood High School. As a reminder, these meetings are open to the public. Dr. Thompson, I don't know if Ryan Quigley had a chance to message you, I know End of Year is busy. But we were hoping that you could let the elementary principals know about that meeting date, um, because, um.
What, what is it again?
Uh, Thursday, September fourteenth, three thirty, at the Norwood High School library. Because some of our representation from the elementary level has dropped off a little bit and the school health council is supposed to be pre-K through twelve. Um, and we just wanna make sure we get that elementary representation back at the table. Um, so, last time I gave you a quick update that we were taking like a three-pronged approach of how we wanted to get out into the community. The school health council, in collaboration with Impact Norwood, um, did go to the senior center last week, last Thursday, um, and had a really great intergenerational meeting. Ten members of the senior center came, um, had a really great conversation with our school health council, Impact Norwood, and some of our, of our student representatives about what students today are experiencing. Um, and that is something that it sounds like will continue in the fall, more regular meetups, um, at the senior center. Um, I am currently working with Clayton from the library and Kate from the library to start to brainstorm, um, some parent programming, um, that we could hopefully do for the school health council at the library or with the library in the fall. So, that has been a good partnership to reestablish. And, um, you may remember that Heather Beg, when she was here with Bob Ludd, had shared, um, that she and the youth ambassadors had put together some slides, um, for teachers to understand how to connect and what's important to students. And, um, she is working with, um, Mr. Quigley and also Dr. Galligan and Dr. Frazek to figure out how to get that information to teachers in the fall. Um, and then the school health council is just hoping next year to start running more events. We're just talking about like wellness fairs, um, getting into elementary schools. But those are things that we will pick up again in September. And Mr. Quigley, Ryan Quigley, is still the chair of the Wellness Council.
Thank you, any questions for Teresa? Okay, uh, so, moving on to our next item is, dah dah dah, middle school building naming update.
It's the David, the David Hilt show. Okay, so, just to update, um, at this point in the process, we had asked that the twenty-first would be the last day to collect names. The purpose of, uh, the information on the website and the, um, responses was just to, uh, suggest names. So, I, what I'm gonna do right now is just two things, I will read the list. There are about twenty names that have been suggested. What I'm hoping to do with that, uh, next is we'll, you know, publish just the formal list and I'll ask to upload it to the website. I'll include the name and just the blurb that comes with it. So, just right now, I'm gonna read the list. I would suggest one, just because of time tonight, I know we would have to take into account the open houses. You know, but the next step would be sometime in the fall, um, planning the open forum where it would just be for, um, the names. And I know when we had went back and done this in March, that, um, people had asked just to consider open house nights and, and when you're planning that, just for time's sake, not to, to get down that road tonight, um, but if you would like to. So, Cochlea was one. I'm gonna pronounce some of these wrong, I apologize, the, uh, Chickatabit Middle School, Norwood Middle School. I always get some of these schoolie McSchoolface, Norwood Junior High. Edward Brook, um, John P. Dixon, Sean M. Dixon, Lo Mason, um, Marfosi, Henry William Diggs, Carol Porrier, um, the Mr. Fitzgerald Middle School, Robert Fitzgerald Middle School, Robert Fitzpatrick Middle School, Tyler Lawrence Middle School, Robert A. Clifford Middle School, John J. Carroll Middle School, Bernie Cooper Middle School, William Fitzgerald Middle School, David Hajar Middle School, Norwood Memorial Middle School, William G. Brooks Middle School, Morse Hill Middle School. So, um, I just harvested the names, um, you know, that were listed. Um, and the Michael Anthony Middle School, that was the last one, sorry. Just took those, I was hoping to just publish those with the little description next to them, um, just for people to, to take a look at over the next couple of months, so.
Can I ask two quick questions? So, one is the survey, or I guess survey nomination form, um, is it being closed since we did have a specific date?
I did, I, I, I did close it as of ten of six tonight.
Okay.
Great.
And then, um, thank you, David, for going through the names, but I also wonder if we could do like, just to be fully transparent with the community, like, how many people submitted each name? Because I know some of those had more than one, Cochlea had significant.
Yeah.
But just so the community can see, these were the names, these were how many people, and then some type of blurb, as you were saying.
I would say we can do that, but also, as a part of the policy, it was to collect the names. I mean, we can absolutely publish that information, but this part was just, you know, when we hear the volume, we see the volume, we know that, um, you know, we have had people visit and speak on behalf, which we appreciate and that the role is engagement here, but, um, you know, um, I think that, that's absolutely not a problem, but we'll do that.
And I believe we had two hundred and forty-one submissions.
Yep.
As of when it was printed, I don't know if that was as of today, but I don't know if we got any more after.
I mean, I'm, I'm in it right now, so I, I think it's the most up-to-date one.
Oh, that's right, this is a.
Yeah, it just fills the spreadsheet as people.
Yep, yeah, so two hundred and forty-one.
Emery, I just have a comment and wanted to talk to you, uh, confer with you guys on this. I have been a little frustrated, I think, um, I think I sh, I think I share that in that the, there is a little bit of a perception and as often happens in the world of social media, this issue has become a little bit of a runaway train. I appreciate David outlining the process and, and I thought it was really important to convey the results of the survey. I wanna walk a fine line between having the community understand that the school committee moved through this process, proposed this process with a great deal of integrity, with the intention of listening to our community. There were conversations had about this process in the middle school building committee where a wider community is involved. And unfortunately, it feels as though it, in it becoming, it's taking on this larger life, there's been a lot of meaning that is a little bit problematic for what our intention was. So, there was no disrespect to any individuals. Meant, in fact, we took no stand on a name whatsoever. We just wanted to allow our community, who had approached us upon the announcement of the new school, um, with new ideas. I will grant that it has been confusing in terms of the signage and the, uh, things that people have actually read. So, that's completely fair. I think at this point, to go through the process of having a public forum, it's, it could put, I don't know that that's a great use of our time, given the response that we've seen so far. It would, might just be a rehashing and even more so, that misinformation can ferment and that steam gathers in a really unproductive way in the community. And so, given what we've learned, um, from people speaking out, but also from our own survey, which I think it's safe to say that the overwhelming majority of responses were for, to keep the name, followed by Norwood Middle School as a second. And then I think, um, maybe Fitz, another, but it was a, it was not a close second. And then I think maybe Fitz, another, but it was, it was not a close second, even with our own survey. So personally, I think we have plenty to do and it's a very busy. I, I just don't know that we necessarily need to spend our time and therefore continue to have to have our intentions misconstrued. So I just wanted to throw that out there and I would move to not necessarily have a public forum and to have us look at the process, relook at the process. Not necessarily obviously call it today, but I don't know if there's a different, I know that's frustrating because we all agreed to that. But this is one of those pivots that I think probably makes the most sense in terms of our use of time and in terms of listening to the community and moving forward. That's not a motion, but I wanted to be able to have people to respond. Or Madam Chair, is it more appropriate that I make a motion that people would discuss?
I think we can discuss. I think we can make a mo, I don't think it actually, because I definitely have.
My, my only pushback would be is that this is based off of a policy. And, and I, I think that where I come from and where I sit, where this is the policy, and I know some people brought it up tonight. You know, there's a certain point in the process where the middle school building committee says, okay, this is when we need the name by. So again, we were transparent. I, I think that that's just, you know, a lack of people sort of paying attention and attention to detail, which sometimes happens.
Yeah.
But I, this is the policy. We've outlined the process and I think it's important to stick to the process and to give everyone involved the opportunity to do that. So whatever the will of the committee is, the will of the committee is, but I will just make that point, so.
No, I was going to say, no, I would, I would definitely like to really quickly, like for some of the things that you, that we've been seeing, that I've been seeing, then the complete misinformation, the twisting. I appreciate everybody that has come out and spoken to us and, you know, and a lot of people have listened to what we've had to say. But there are other people who are, you know, twisting things that are just absolutely ridiculous. I'd like to remind the folks, even the folks that came tonight who are very respectful, that you're not the only voters in Norwood. I'm going to totally go back on what I just said there in a minute, and you're going to say, what the hell is she doing? But I just want to remind them that it, I've seen posted on social media that the will of the, the will of your constituents and you have to, you're supposed to answer to your constituents. And to that, I tell you, it was our constituents who asked what we were going to name it and gave suggestions for a new one. So as little as some people want to hear this, there are other people in the community that had, and this was in no way to remove a name. It wasn't, it was, oh, we're building something new. Well, what's it going to be? What's it going to be named? Like, it wasn't ever, you know, malicious to remove a name for people saying, well, if you rebuild this, would you rename it? Well, maybe, yeah, actually. I'm pretty sure there was, you know, some mild conversations around Norwood High School when it got built. But I mean, it was just, to be honest, it was the Norwood Senior High School when I went to it, and it is now Norwood High School. So is it still Norwood Senior High School? Exactly. So we changed that name, FYI.
And we actually changed the budget line because I couldn't figure out what N S H S was.
Well, this is still Junior High North, right, in our budget book?
Was.
In the budget book. So, so the Norwood High School did have a name change when it was built because it was the Norwood Senior High School when it was in the previous building. So I just want to remind folks that who keep wanting to say, listen to your voters, listen, we did. That's how we started the process. So, you know, that not the loud, the loudest is not always the only. Having said that, are you going to say this is where she's completely gone off the rails? I do agree with Kate that we have, I, I, I don't know if anyone else is feeling it, but there's been a lot going on lately and we're crunched for time and we're crunched for thing, just for resources. I'm feeling pulled in a million different directions, you know, without this. And I have soul searched and I can't think of a reason to pull the name off. It's, it's, this has been obviously a very crazy history lesson. I also love that, you know, there's been a lot of, well, we didn't, we didn't teach about him in middle school to the middle school students. I've been here. I went to the J. Pete Oldham and never pronounced it that way. And the Norwood Junior High South and the Norwood Senior High School, and I didn't know who he was. And I'm, I'm glad for the history lesson, but it's not something I would have learned in middle school. So it, it, that's, that's another thing, you know, it, it, there's just been so many things out there. However, although the survey was not a vote, and I want that to be clear. When a lot of people said, we filled out your, we voted on your website, you didn't vote. It was a, it was gathering information. But I think it does give us, it paints a picture for us that there were more suggestions for the Cokely Middle School than any other name. And in my opinion, there are, I hate using the term bigger fish to fry, than trying to see this through to potentially September where the answer is still going to be the same and we wasted three months of Nothing Burger. And that's my concern.
I quote you on Nothing Burger?
Definitely.
Can I just add just one piece that I think has gotten lost in the conversation? The community members who made the suggestions early on, they made that suggestion in, as representatives for the forgotten parts of Norwood. And they made the suggestion as an opportunity for the town of Norwood to visibly demonstrate their values of inclusivity and specifically honor people of color who have longstanding traditions and contributions to the Norwood community. So I don't want that to get lost. I don't have a dog in the fight. But I think it's important, if we say that we are about equity, we are about inclusivity, that goes down to the naming as well. And I also just want to raise, I think we've created this false dichotomy of all or nothing, and it's not. So, you know, the name could stay the same and we have more dedicated spaces in the building. The name could be Norwood Middle School and we have the Cokely Administration Wing. We have the Diggs Library. Like, there, we have a lot more options available that make room for everyone to be, feel seen and heard, which is what started the process in the first place. A group of people who have a longstanding tradition here of asking to be seen and heard. So I, I, I just don't want that to get lost in the conversation.
I, I think that's very valuable. Thank you for saying that. And, and I think we've heard a lot in public comment tonight and in other nights and in other places of where did this come from? And why is this being done? And it, it started in the community. So emails started to come to us in twenty nineteen about the names. And you're absolutely correct in where they came from, Dr. Taylor. They also came up in the school building committee forums. I hear what everybody's saying. I appreciate what everybody's saying. I want people at home to, to try to remember that this is our business meeting and this is where we have to have these hard conversations and deliberate. We cannot have them outside of a public meeting. So what people are seeing and hearing right now is all of us taking our role very seriously, thinking this through, looking at policies, looking at process, looking at our equity audit, looking at all the various pieces that fell under our lap and trying to work through this. I hear completely everybody who came to speak tonight and other nights, and I took notes tonight and I took notes the other night. And Dr. Cokely sounds like an absolutely amazing educator and mentor. I mean, to have that impact and that legacy on so many people who are coming, clearly, there was a reason the school committee years ago named that building, and I don't want to take that away. And I do really respect other school committee members coming here and talking and giving us history and context. Because I'm guilty of it too, sometimes getting frustrated just six and a half years into this, like, oh, people have forgotten, you know, four or five years ago. And so I, so I appreciate that as well when, you know, Ms. Esco and Mr. Joseph said, like, hey, this is what we did. And I, I think it's important to know that as well and to respect that. All of you know I'm a process person. And it doesn't mean I don't respect people, but I do. But through processes is how I try to have boundaries and expectations and respect. And, you know, David, to, to your point earlier, like, we had set a policy, we set a process, and I think we are seeing that process in action. And, and I'm not mad at all or annoyed that people are coming here and speaking. I'm glad they are. I, I'm glad they are. But this isn't a vote. This is a survey. And the way we put it out to people was this was a nomination form. So I feel if at this point we say we're stopping the process and we're just staying with Cokely, we're not true to our word and our integrity. Because what if I was somebody who took my time and submitted and said Norwood Middle School or Diggs Middle School or any of the other names on here? Well, wait a minute, you just told me this was a nomination. You didn't tell me it was a vote. And, and I didn't put, I did not put anything in here. I'm just using me as a, you know, theory here. But people took time to fill out a nomination to follow our process. If they were told this was a vote, then perhaps more people would have filled it out because maybe they already knew their colleague, their family member said Norwood Middle School. So why would I fill it out? It's already on there. Do you know what I mean? And I also think in the six and a half years I've been on the school committee, there were two other issues that have risen to this level of community comment. And it wasn't always the loudest voices that represented the majority. So that is something to, to consider too. I respect what is said. We may decide it remains Cokely. I have absolutely no problem if that's a decision that we get at. But I think stopping the process now is not the right way to move forward. I think it sets a dangerous precedent for the school committee if we put out a process and policy and then take it back. I am open to talking about maybe not having our students vote at the end and engaging them in a different way. But I think we should still move forward with setting a date for a public forum in the fall.
Yes, Joan.
Is there a motion on the table? Because this has already been voted on and for this to even be discussed, we should have a motion on the table by somebody who voted for it initially.
That's what I asked.
I think we all voted for it, didn't we?
We did.
Yes.
But also, to be honest, like, I think the.
We need a vote, we, we need a motion on the table in order to continue this discussion. It's nine forty-five at night. If we're not, if no one's serious about putting out a motion, then we do not have this conversation.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion that we, I move that we stop the process at this point and the name remains the Dr. Philip O. Cokely Middle School for all of the reasons I just stated for and against myself.
Friendly amendment? Could we make a motion to amend the process and take the overwhelming majority of the response and look at the naming of parts of the building?
I don't think we need to do that with this. I think this, this is to name the building. I think we still have the opportunity to name parts of the building as in a separate.
There's a slightly different policy too about that that we would want to follow.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that, that is my motion to discuss it because I, I just feel like it's going to be a lot of work for Nothing Burger.
Emery, would you just please repeat what you said, your motion?
I make a motion to stop the process at this point today and keep, keep the name the Dr. Philip O. Cokely Middle School.
Joan, do you?
And if nobody wants to second it, then it dies right there.
Oh, second.
Oh. So second if I can. So now we can continue to discuss it. If anybody wants to discuss it.
Did, Joan, did you have anything to add?
I distinctly recall being on this committee with a number of people regarding another very contentious vote and, and nobody wanted to reopen that vote. So I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated that we're talking about reopening this vote.
Well, it's a different vote. I would say we're not reopening it. I'm saying that looking at the things that we have gotten to this point, I am moving to.
We would have to rescind the previous vote for the process.
Would we?
Because we voted on the process. We voted that that was the process that we were going to be moving forward. So we would have to rescind that vote and then we would have to vote on a new, on a new plan for naming the middle school. And I, again, I distinctly recall, I don't remember, a year and a half ago, when I tried to rescind the vote and there was no, we wouldn't even have a conversation about it. So I'm coming from that perspective of being a little bit frustrated with when do we stick with the process and when do we not stick with the process?
What process was that?
School start time.
Uh huh.
So do, so what you're saying is that my motion doesn't matter because we would need to rescind the vote?
I hear it, Joan, saying that, and I'm not.
I'm just, I'm just being so stickler and.
No, that's fine. And, and I'm saying, and I'm, I'm making a motion because, like I said, I just, I, I'm not. I, I want the, I want the, I want the process to, I don't want people who think that they're louder than everybody else to think that they can dictate. However, if I could see the writing on the wall three months down the road and save three months' worth of work, is what.
I would just.
The problem is that we laid out a process for people, right? And so people participated in the process in the way that we laid it out for them.
Right.
Well, some people did it in a way that was not laid out.
And they've hijacked this situation and it's going to continue to be hijacked and divert attention and create division. And that is, if we have an overwhelming response, the process is not worth the potential misunderstanding.
We don't know that. You don't, you, you, you can't say that you know what people didn't do based on what some people did do. Some people may have only been like, okay, we threw the vote in, that's all we needed. We threw, we threw the name in, that's all we needed to do. Right? Because that was the process that we set up. We said there was going to be a public forum. We said we were going to select three names. Like, there was, you can't say that people didn't, you know, advocate for a particular name because another group did advocate for a particular name.
Okay.
Yet you don't know what people didn't do. People made decisions based on the process that we laid out.
Okay, that's fair.
And we don't, right? So I.
You mean people who haven't.
I don't have, I don't understand, I guess I don't understand why we don't have a dog in this fight, right? We have never had a dog in this fight. We have always came to this with going, look, we were, we were receiving requests to change the name like, as, like Teresa said, as far back as two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. I have an email from someone saying, hey, you should really consider this name because this person isn't particularly well represented, but was huge in Norwood history from like two thousand and twenty. So it's, it, 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 it. This came, I don't understand why we are putting a dog in the fight by picking a name when our whole entire purpose for this process was to not have a dog in the fight.
Well, we're going to have to pick the name in the end. I mean, that is our.
No, we picked, what we intentionally said, we were going to pick three names so that we didn't end up with, somebody did the Ducky by Duck phase, right? Like the.
No, no, no. What I'm, what I'm saying is the school committee picks it in the end. That's our policy, is it's.
Well, that's not the process, though.
I know, and so if, if this motion fails, I got another one.
It's, it's, but it's after we have all of this input and after we take it to the pit.
Yeah. I, I think to Joan's point, so.
We're rubber, we're rubber, our, the way we have set this process up is we're rubber sapping it.
Yeah. So in two thousand and seventeen, one of the very first things in Dr. Thompson's lap was the decision if we were staying with Tri Valley, excuse me, Bay State, or moving to Tri Valley. The people who came to public comment were overwhelmingly stay in Bay State. And then we, as a school committee, decided we need a dedicated public forum. The people who came out when they were told, we want to hear a public forum on the Athletic League, it was not all Tri Valley. And I think it was, it was, it was explained. But, but we heard different voices once we intentionally said, here is a process, here is a time, this is how we want to hear from you. And that's what we did with this. We said nominate now and then we are going to determine a public forum in September. There may be people, and I feel strongly, that if we stop the process now, we're silencing voices that we said we were going to listen to in the fall.
I don't think before this, people in the fall would have paid any attention. I think if it's not, it's not a fifty, forty-five. We are, this will be bad, I think this will be bad for the community because it's allowing for more dusting up, creating. for more dusting up, creating people who, if they, wha, I don't understand the people who aren't speaking if they aren't aware of it already. What's going to happen is-
Well, I also, let me, let me say one more thing though, sorry Joan, one more thing with process. I think we open ourselves up to an open meeting law violation because we told the public-
That we would do-
That we were gonna do something and their time to speak and when we would take the next step was on a certain date. So, if we're changing that, we need to be very careful tonight in making it clear to people, when are we changing it? So, for example, if it's July eighteenth, we need to tell people now so people have the opportunity, if they were planning to speak in September, they can speak to us before that.
Okay.
I really think doing this now is dangerous for us.
So, say more about that, I don't understand.
You have to be very, you have to be very clear with the public on what you're voting on and when.
Good, Joan.
Sorry, Joan.
I, I just want to remind people, I'm sorry, I don't want to bring up school start times but because we're doing this, I feel like I have to. We had over seven hundred people on a ballot, on an initiative, on a petition. We had a group of people who went through board of selection. So, to say that just because we have a loud vocal minority now and therefore we should listen, but we wouldn't even entertain a vote. Previously, when we had a much louder and much larger vocal minority, it to me feels it's, it's, it's where I run, I run, I, where, what is our, where is our-
Well, I, I can, I can definitely draw very distinct differences between the two where we, we had gone through, we had already gone through quite a pro, not pro, any process, it's a terrible word to be using right now. We had a lot of things that were already in place at that time, that we had balls rolling, teacher contracts being negotiated. We haven't done a thing with this building. So, I don't, I think it is very different that we have, we don't have to tell them until the end of the year what the signs need to be. We haven't spent any money, we haven't done, like, what's that?
October is when they-
It's the end of the year, October is-
It's ten, there are twelve months.
October is two months from the end of the year.
I'm specifically referring, I'm specifically referring to Kate saying, well, where are those people? And my point is-
No, 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 okay, that's, that's fair, yeah.
Yeah, but Joan, you and I agree, I, you're, you're saying because we did something maybe not in the best way once, that we should stick to that and maybe not do it in the best way?
No, Joan, one on the other-
What I'm, you know, what I'm saying is if we keep foot flopping or whether or not we stick to process or whether or not we allow a vocal minority to change process is we're foot flopping back and forth and what do we do?
My, my thing, my thing would be this, is that we still have a lot of agenda to get through. I hear what people are saying, although I, I, I think if you want to propose a, a change, you, you schedule it for next meeting.
Well, so, so, yes.
And some of the feedback I have heard and one of the things I would be willing to budge on is, you know, even some of the people that have come to speak and they're reaching out have, have the conversation around, you know, what does it look like with involvement with students? And I know we were waiting for principal feedback and some of that, so that is something I would be open to, but I, I will reiterate, I just think like, this is a process, this is a policy.
Yeah.
Process and policy.
Um, after, so I just want to, just be able to get this quickly because you're right, we do have a lot of agenda items. Um, because based on what Teresa's saying and not alone, I will rescind my motion because I don't want to be in violation of open meeting law. And you, I was, you're right, that, that is not enough time in the process, and there is a process, to give people an adequate, because we did have a process set forward, you're a hundred percent right that that would be-
Because that's all that's on our agenda is middle school building name update. It didn't even include vote and, and-
Yep, yep, yep.
And if this, if, if, if you want as chair and you want a superintendent, this to go back on the next agenda.
I think you have to clearly state reconsideration of middle school building process.
Name, naming prop, policy process and clearly indicate a vote.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, so, I would, I would suggest, even, even if I don't feel like there was a lot of support in the room to end it, I do feel like we need to relook at it because I do feel like the, the student part of it is, there's been a, even from people who are not necessarily voting for Cokely, I've heard, is that the best thing you, you really think? So, I, I don't know, I would really like to reconsider that because I don't want to put our students on the firing line of if it doesn't turn out well and people being like, well, you're the ones that voted for it.
So, so, so if the two of you decide you want to on the agenda, that's my recommendation for how to put it on. And then to Joan's point of Robert rules of order, what I believe would need to happen is that one of us who voted for it would then have to put a motion to reconsider, which, Emery, you did that recently with something else.
Yeah.
Say like what? Um, but a motion to reconsider.
Yep.
Um, I, I believe that's how it should procedurally happen.
Yep. But it's actually, it's whoever voted against it, isn't it?
No, it's whoever voted in majority.
I thought it was whoever voted in majority.
Was it?
It was five to zero.
Yeah, so it could be anyone, any of us can make the motion to-
I want to be doing it, I want to do it right.
Good, good.
It can be anybody.
Okay, so I rescind. Um, you have all heard me and, and, and-
And I don't need to add that to the to-do list, we can just say we'll add it to the seven, eight.
It'll be on the seven, eight, um, because I do think we, I do think we need to re, at least rediscuss it.
Seven eighteen?
Seven eighteen, yeah, seven one eight.
Which I also, Emery, um, that is a remote meeting, so people should know that public comment will only be remote as well. And they need to call Dr. Thompson's office by noon the day of July eighteenth to register to speak, but the rest of public comment remains true, three minutes per person, up to a total of thirty minutes.
Yep, great.
Okay.
Thank you for that reminder.
Name is Sharon, thank you.
Thank you for entertaining my complete civil duality there. Okay, so moving on.
Can I make a recommendation on the agenda?
Hi, there's a lot of recommendations on this agenda.
Well, 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 how to proceed because we do have to-
I have several that, yeah, please go ahead, yeah.
If it's the, will the committee, I would say, I'm not sure if there's a policy subcommittee update, so I won't touch that, but I think subcommittee assignments, goals, long-term agenda should be moved to the next meeting.
I agree. I actually had one, one, one minute thing to say on the long-term agenda. Um, I agree, I think we should, with the subcommittee, I mean, the, the goals.
Yeah.
I think we should be looking for a workshop in like August.
I agree.
Because it would be best to do that with outside of a work-
Just catch it out.
Yeah, and outside of a working meeting where we're, we have a million other agenda items. Assignment, we could get through in a couple of minutes if it's all the same and get it, uh, done and dusted, but I think the next couple of things could be very, very quick.
I agree.
Is that okay with everybody else to move those? Do you, do we have, do we have a policy, uh?
Not much, no.
Do you, do you want to give any at all?
Oh, sure, yes, okay, I didn't, that was a green light.
Sorry, policy-
No, just that, we only met, so we met on the sixth, so, and we've, we've met since then, so I gave you that. Um, but we met on the thirteenth briefly about the elementary handbook and then, uh, people were backing into a meeting, so we really didn't get to any other agenda items. And we didn't get to set our next meeting date, so I have to do that, but my aim is to have us meet before the eighteenth to address those, um, some of the priorities on that goal sheet. We've, we've talked about them once through, but now that we are sort of moving along with the, the goal stock, I think we should talk about them. And then there was a few things that came up today in terms of the policy updates, so, and, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing much.
Perfect. Any questions? So, the next item was the subcommittee assignments and, um, as we just said, I think it'd be really quick. If we're gonna remain the same, the only thing I might suggest on here, um, so I did, um, put the document in our, um, agendas today because it was the one from last year and I just kind of moved it over. Um, if everybody is okay staying on their same subcommittees, we can just move over most of them. Um, the only ones that I added, I added to the end, um, student advisory committee because I do feel like there needs to be dedicated one or two people, um, working on dates for meetings, working on, um, you know, uh, just things with the student advisory council, committee council, I, someone's gotta tell me what the hell it is. Counselor committee, we keep going back and forth and waffling. Is it counsel? Okay, so change that to counsel. Is that okay, is everybody here okay with staying on their committees and then we can discuss the student advisory council out of the next meeting? And who would take, or, or we can do that by email if somebody wants to volunteer. Um, I do feel like it's important to get somebody sooner rather than later to work with them over the summer, but-
For who?
The student advisory council.
So, we told them we, because we, Kate and I met with them last week, so we're not meeting again with them till September.
Till September, right?
Yes, we have time for that. But if I could actually ask maybe this is, is, is tabled because, um, if you want to have a little bit more of a conversation of workload distribution and also the acknowledgement of a contract negotiations stuff coming up, we're figuring out who's doing that. So, if we could maybe-
It's not normally something we-
I said we can talk about it another time, David.
And there's another couple, there's another couple at the bottom, just really quick too, just because I want to know for, um, budget transfers for, we, I had, was, I approved them for the end of June twenty twenty-two. I don't know if we have any between now and July one, I know Ms. Sharon left, but do we want to, um-
I think you should-
Deputize me, um, in that-
I'll make a motion that you as chair can be the one that signs budget transfers if they arise over the summer because we don't have an in-person meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, Joan?
Hi.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joan, uh, Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm OES as well, so thank you.
So, Emery, the start times of pack bargaining is over, so.
I thought so, the, the MOU thing, I didn't know if we can even do anything else.
Nope, that has moved now firmly under the administration.
Perfect, okay.
Pardon gift.
Taste my name off of that, please.
Why is there no delete button on a pro book? That's just wrong. Sorry, okay. Um, and then I don't think, I think, I don't think we're doing unice stipends, are we still working on that? Yeah, I had Joan on there, but-
We're starting, but it's gonna come back in, in negotiations, not a separate thing.
Okay, but I can put this on the July eighteen, um, agenda, we can talk, we can hash out more of those.
Okay, great.
Okay. Perfect. So, the next thing was, we just said the, uh, the goals, we'll look for a workshop in August. Uh, next item is UNICE contract. We have that in our packets. Dr. Thompson, do you want to make that, or just kind of steamroll through that one?
Yes, so we have negotiated a contract for the, uh, for UNICE, which includes the associate principal. Um, that is in your, um, in your contract, in your-
Packet.
In your packet, um, for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Okay, any other questions? Joan?
Are you alive?
That was a yes?
I thought you were asking about questions.
No, I'm just, I'm moving right on, but we are in the, we're in the speed round right now.
Stay with it, Joan.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Hi.
David?
Yes.
I M E S as well, so that passes five to zero. Okay, um, so the next item is approving the appointment of the assistant superintendent for operations and strategy.
Yes, uh, so I am pleased to present to you for appointment of assistant superintendent for operations and strategy, Dr. Teresa Taylor. Uh, in your packet is her, uh, contract for your approval.
Any questions for that?
Move to approve.
Moved by David, seconded by Teresa. Okay, speed round, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I M E S as well, that passes five to zero. Okay, so next item was the long-term agenda review, um, we are gonna table that to July. The only thing I want to say in that is I have started to populate, I did not do the whole scale populate, but I've started to populate some of the quarterly things, some of the, um, obviously the things that are getting moved to July eighteen, things that , um, we've just talked about today that we said we'd bring back in August. Please, as subcommittees, please, 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 go look in there and see where you should be starting to fit in things, um, based on your meetings, where your updates are gonna go. I think MSBC has started to kind of just like do a quarterly one, but if it doesn't work with the MSBC meetings, like, fix those, fill them in. Please, uh, it's a living, breathing document for everybody to be, um, checking over, and that is my only spiel on that. And, uh, we'll bring it up again in July since we have to look at it locally. Okay, that brings us to protocols.
So, I took a look, um, there were no changes, I did ask for feedback, um, and then what we would do is with the vote here, we would approve it as if Joan cannot see it right now, but if you look across the wall, um, Dave, I would ask that whoever can work their magic at, in, in your office or made that happen, we can do that and then it would be available to sign.
We didn't sign that one, you know?